Good morning. We're going to go ahead and start this Tuesday, April 21st, meeting of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. I call the meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I call the roll, I would like to note for the record that all five supervisors are participating via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by roll call vote. Additionally, before we begin, any members of the public that wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting, please review the instructions on the clerk of the board's website at www.sandieg county.gov/telecomments. With that, I will now call the roll. Supervisor Jacob?
Yes, here.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Present.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Here.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
There we go. Here, sorry.
Great. Chairman Cox?
Here. We will get started this morning with an invocation, which today is going to be given by Dr. Nick Ifantidis, who is our chief medical officer, and I might add, has been doing an exemplary job along with Dr. Wooton and Dr. McDonald as we deal with this COVID-19 pandemic. And then, the Pledge of Allegiance this morning will be led by Supervisor Nathan Fletcher. So, Dr. Ifantidis, if you would go ahead and lead us in the invocation at this time.
Chairman Cox, good morning, and thank you so very much, sir, for this privilege. As a believer who happens to be your chief medical officer, this is a true blessing. Before I pray, I want to read a passage, and when I shared with a couple of my confidants that I would be doing this today, one of them, that was with us last week at the press conference, Rolf Banurshka, actually suggested that I read this passage, because for many of us, we are looking at what we are currently going through with a novel coronavirus as a war of sorts, a war that we are waging with an invisible enemy that is new, and that we are proceeding in some uncharted territory. And in the book of Exodus, there is a passage in chapter 17, in the context of the analogy, where it says, "Moses said to Joshua, 'Choose some of your men, and go out to fight the enemy. Tomorrow I will stand on top of the hill with the staff of God in my hand.'" As long as Moses held up his hands, the Israelites were winning; but whenever he lowered his hands, the enemy was winning. When Moses's hands grew tired, they took a stone, and they put it under him, and he sat on it. Aaron and Ur held his hands up, one on each side, so that his hands remained steady until the sun set. And so, the Israelites overcame the enemy and won the battle. As I pray, I just want to acknowledge that, to me, this is a time for us, as a community, to be holding up each other's hands in unity. And with that, if I may pray, Heavenly Father, it is with a spirit of thanksgiving that we come before you today, thanking you, to this point, for everything that you have done to protect our community. I thank you for our Board of Supervisors, for the executive, legal, medical leadership that is in this chamber. I thank you for all of those who are in a position of authority during these uncertain days. I pray for them. I pray for our city mayors and civic leaders. I pray for our regional state leadership. I pray for our federal leadership. Lord, despite our differences, I pray that you would bring us together in unity for love for our community. I also want to pray for the executive leadership of our region, for the health systems, for the corporate stewards, for the faith base, for the charity, for the community-based organizations that are making such important and critical decisions. I also want to pray for the clinical leadership, those who are in positions of making policy decisions and interacting with policymakers, that you would guide those conversations in unity. And Lord, I would pray for the frontline servants, the many who are doing what they are doing during these days so sacrificially, with some peril, even for their families. I pray that you would protect them. I pray that you would sustain them. And I would also pray for all the other frontline individuals who are in so many roles of support behind the scenes. I pray for our broader community, that you would indeed bring unity, Lord, especially during the context where there are differences of opinion and there are struggles. For those who disagree, I pray that you would bless them with the opportunity to disagree agreeably, and to disagree and express their disagreement in a safe and appropriate manner. And perhaps most importantly, I want to pray for the most vulnerable in our community, those who are facing security that are now facing insecurity, those that were already insecure that are struggling so much with the circumstances that we are currently facing, those who are struggling emotionally, those who are struggling with isolation economically, those who are disproportionately burdened based on their socioeconomic status, their racial status. A special blessing upon them, I pray. Lord, for all of our clergy, of all faiths, who are now in such an important position to support so many with so many needs, a special blessing upon them. And lastly, Lord, I am even mindful, as a good neighbor, for those south of our border who are facing the current challenges that they are, that you would bless and guide them and protect them under these circumstances. And so, I pray all of these things, in faith that you give ear to our words, in certainty that you love us, in hope for tomorrow, and in the posture of needing your guidance and wisdom today. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Nick, for that invocation and for your service to the County of San Diego. Now Supervisor Fletcher, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go to our regular agenda listing now, which we start off with Public Communications. My understanding is we have two individuals that wish to speak to us under Public Communications. Obviously, these are communications that were called in, and I believe the clerk of the board will go ahead and read us those public communications at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two comments submitted by the public on non-agenda items. The first non-agenda public comment is from Louise Russo. It reads, "Attached is a press release from the CPUC dated April 2, 2020. In it, the CPUC declares that ratepayers are using 15% to 20% more energy due to shelter in place, including having students home, 500,000 in San Diego County alone. It details a number of ways bills can be reduced, yet there is no resolution nor any other action on your part to reduce power bills for your constituents. Do it now. Pressure SDG&E to reduce rates for all ratepayers until the current crisis is over." The second comment is from Michael Anderson, and it reads, "I am new to Spring Valley. Trash pickup day runs for three days. Tuesday is waste management, Wednesday is edco, and Thursday is republic. Each service runs three large diesel trucks, trash recyclables, green waste. Each service travels up and back on my small residential street, effectively 18 trucks. Streets are cracked with potholes, not a surprise. Seems very inefficient, destructive, and noisy to have three different providers doing the same basic service. Can we reduce just to one service?" That concludes the non-agenda public comments this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, under Public Communications, the board can't take any action. We can only listen to the concerns that have been raised, and staff will follow up if that's appropriate. We'll move on now to the approval of the minutes and the proceedings for the regular meetings of April 7, 2020, and the special meeting of April 9, 2020, the Air Pollution Control District Board meeting of March 24, Flood Control District meeting of March 11, the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority meeting of February 25, and the February 26, and the Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting of January 14, 2020, and the Sanitation District meeting of March 11, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval of the minutes. Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Jacob, second one by Supervisor Gaspar. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Now proceed on to the formation of the consent calendar. All items on the agenda will be considered as a part of the consent calendar unless there's a desire on the part of the public or members of the board to pull items for further discussion. Would the clerk please identify those items that have been pulled for discussion by the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one has been pulled by the public. Item two has been pulled by the public. Item four has been pulled by the public. Item five has been pulled by the public. Item 19 will be heard concurrently with item two. Item 21 has been pulled by the public. And item 22, our closed session matters, will be considered at the conclusion of the board's public session. All the remaining items on the Board of Supervisors' agenda, as well as the Air Pollution Control Board, Flood Control District, In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority, Sanitation District, and Redevelopment Successor Agency, may be placed in the consent calendar for your board's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll proceed now to see if members of the board have items they wish to have pulled. I'll start with Supervisor Diane Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was item number five pulled?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Any other items to be pulled?
No, I have no other items, no other comments, and I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. We'll move on now to Supervisor Gaspar. Any items to pull or discussion?
Thank you, Chairman. I have no further items to pull. I'll second the motion.
Okay, moving on to Supervisor Fletcher.
I've got no items to pull.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 10, please.
Okay, any other items to pull? Okay, if there's, and I have no items to pull, so I'll ask the clerk at this time to please identify those items that will be pulled from the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items that the board will be discussing this morning are items 1, 2, 4, 5, 10, 19, and 21. And 22 are closed session matters.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Jacob, second one by Supervisor Gaspar, to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
The first item that we will be taking action on is item number one. This is an authorization to accept the California Department of Public Health funding for countywide childhood-led poisoning prevention services, and authorization to pursue future funding opportunities for childhood-led poisoning prevention services. And I believe we have 10 individuals that wish to speak on this item. Is there a need for a staff report on this item?
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just note that any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that have been provided to you, and you'll be muted until it is your turn to speak. We are just checking for the callers.
Okay, was there any additional comments by the CAO or staff on this item?
Chairman Cox, members of the board, this is Nick Machion, agency director. This is a great news item in the additional funding we receive for the state California for fiscal year 2023. It includes some additional requirements to initiate a proactive inspection program to identify and reduce lead hazards in high-risk areas to prevent lead exposure for children and their families. We work cooperatively with our Department of Environmental Health in doing environmental investigations for lead-poisoned cases. We provide reports to the state reflecting environmental investigation findings, and we ensure the appropriate mitigations with those homes that have high lead levels. Dr. Wooton is here from Public Health. I'm not sure if the doctor would like to add anything further. Okay, that concludes the staff report.
Okay, let's go right to the callers. Mr. Potter, could you go ahead and call up the first call-in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It appears that none of the individuals that have requested to speak have called in at this time.
Okay. Well, if there's no public comments on this item, what's the pleasure of the
Mr. Chair, I guess we could leave this item to the end, and if those, or when those callers call in, we could take it up, and it would be my recommendation to give them the opportunity when they call in. If they don't, by the end of the meeting, then we, you know, vote on it.
Okay, we can, we can certainly do that. We can dial action on that. The next item, I think, that we would want to take action on, and we can come back to one later, is item two and item 19, which I think are going to be considered together. And I know that staff has a presentation on that, both of these items. So, the CAO would like to go ahead and lead off.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just note that, again, any, any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions provided to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, members of the board. It's been over two months since our county's public health and local emergency declaration, and we continue to work seven days a week to help limit the spread of COVID-19 within our region. We knew the month of April would be critical, working hard to ensure the restrictive actions we took early on would prevent our hospital system from being overwhelmed and limit the loss of life. I'm amazed by how our citizens have responded. They have adhered closely to our stay-at-home order, and when they do go out, they cautiously follow social distancing and face covering protocols. Many have sacrificed their economic security to follow our order. Some have taken on the added responsibility to help vulnerable neighbors and to homeschool their children. Their lives have been upended, and yet they have steadfastly stayed the course to help keep their community safe. We are very grateful. As a result of their diligence, we have flattened the curve, and in a few minutes, Dr. Wooton will share some data that allows us to start looking forward to what the future holds in a safe and responsible manner. Today's presentation will focus on incident command activities, public health progress, reopening criteria, and fiscal realities that must be addressed as we reboot county operations. On the positive side, we're working diligently toward reopening recreational activities that include parks, beaches, water sports, golfing, tennis, basketball, and boating. And by our next board meeting, we plan to have a framework that is being developed with our business community to get our nonessential businesses up and running again in the months ahead. Of course, we will have restrictions, but restrictions that our citizens are committed to abiding by as we come to grips with new processes and routines as a vaccine is developed and approved. And of course, we will have criteria if we have to start tightening up again. Public safety and public health is our number-one priority. We will also update you on where we stand compared to the criteria set forth by Dr. Fauci in the federal plan to getting America back to work again, as well as how we are addressing the six indicators set forth by Governor Newsom. Both of those documents are critical to our reopening plan. Lastly, we will begin to outline the fiscal picture we face for the remainder of this fiscal year, as well as the significant revenue shortfall that we will experience in FY 2021. There is no doubt we have to push the reset button and redefine county services going forward. We are well-positioned and committed to doing that in the weeks and months ahead. With that, let me turn the presentation over to Incident Commander Don Stoyer, followed by our Public Health Officer Wilma Wooton, and our financial geniuses, Andy Pease and Tracy Sandoval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Helen. Since we last came to your board on April 8, our efforts in response to COVID-19 are ongoing. We continue the command and control of our county response to COVID-19 through the instant command at our Emergency Operations Center. Today, we'll provide updates on our local public health data, the financial elements of our response, and finally, you'll receive an update on our regional economic outlook. I'll be joined today by Public Health Officer Wilma Wooton, Dr. Wilma Wooton, our Incident Command Chief, Finance Chief Andy Pease, and the county's Chief Financial Officer, Tracy Sandoval. We would like to begin with a few updates to items we have covered previously. In an unprecedented partnership, we are standing up an approximately 200-bed federal medical station at Palomar Medical Center in Escondido. This hospital will serve as a regional resource to support response and bed capacity region-wide, and is expected to be set up tomorrow, Wednesday, April 22. In addition, an alternate care site has been set up within a dormitory at UCSD to provide additional space and capacity to serve our population. This site is ready to launch as soon as hospital capacity requires. And sector outreach activities continue with regularly scheduled conference calls, encouraging two-way communication and virtual town meetings. Starting with eight sectors at the beginning of this response, there are now 16 targeted sectors, providing a coordinated approach to outreach and information sharing across the region. To date, there have been over 170 sector outreach activities, averaging over 20 a week. These sector calls will be instrumental as we begin to dial down our non-pharmaceutical interventions. And the outreach does not stop there. On a daily basis, media presentations take place to ensure our community is fully informed of our efforts to keep them safe and healthy. And we continue to engage our San Diego County community with Live Well at Home outreach effort. Since its inception, the Live Well at Home website has seen 28,000 unique website visits. In addition, our hashtag #LiveWellSD and hashtag StayHomeSD campaigns continue to grow, engaging more and more community members each day. And now, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Wooton to provide a public health medical update. Dr. Wooton?
Thank you, Don. Chairman Cox and members of the board, the number of cases of COVID-19 in San Diego County continues to grow, but at an encouragingly decreased number day-to-day in the past week. This table provides a summary of the total number of positive cases with a breakdown by age, hospitalizations, intensive care unit admissions, and deaths. The county has reported a total of 2,325 positive cases as of yesterday. 1,226 of these total number, or 52.7%, are between the ages of 10 and 49 years of age. Between gender, it's roughly 50% for both male and female. 562, or 24% of the total number, have been hospitalized. 189, or 8.1% of the total number, have been admitted to the ICU. This number represents 34% of the total of those hospitalized. And unfortunately, 72, or 3.1% of the total number of cases have died. And this information can be found on our coronavirus-st.com website. It is provided daily with a breakdown by cities, zip codes, and race and ethnicity. On April 16, 2020, the White House released their Guidelines for Opening Up America Again, which outlines a gradual reopening of the U.S. economy during the COVID-19 pandemic. The guidelines focuses on, the guidelines focus on three main criteria with related metrics that must be met. These include symptoms, cases, and hospitals, as seen in this slide. In review of the gating criteria, I will provide evidence of the county's progress to date for each of the five metrics across these three categories. For the first of the three criteria, it is symptoms. Under symptoms, there are two metrics, either downward trajectory of influenza-like illnesses reported in the past 14 days, and downward trajectory of COVID-like syndromic cases reported within a 14-day period. For ILI, or influenza-like illnesses, in the past 30 days, the percent of emergency department visits for influenza-like illnesses has dropped from 10% on March 16 to 3% on April 15. So, for this metric, we have met. Since April 4, the trend for COVID-like syndromic cases has varied. Syndromic indicators for this particular metric will continue to be monitored. If you look at various, and I'll have a slide shortly, we have not met this, but we are appearing to flatten, and, but we want to see a downward trend. In the next slide, this shows the percentage of individuals that have presented to our emergency departments. That is the yellow line, and you can see from March 15, there's been a dramatic decline. The bottom, or blue line, is, represents COVID-19 syndromic cases. And if you look between April 4 and April 18, while there is variability, if you drew a line through that, it would appear to be flat. And so, again, we must continue to monitor these metrics. The second of the three criteria is cases. Unlike the symptom, symptoms criteria, where two metrics must be met, for cases, only one of the two metrics presented here must be met. The first metric is, the first metric of this criteria shows a slight downward trajectory of documented cases of COVID-19 within the past 14 days. And the second one looks at the percentage of positive tests of the overall total number of tests within the past 14 days. We've met the, we chose or selected the second metric, and if you'll move the slide, this shows actual positive cases as a percentage of the total number of COVID-19 cases, or rather, tests that were performed. So, this has a definite downward trajectory. This slide is new cases by date reported among San Diego County residents. So, it is not so downward trending, but we are continuing to monitor this. And if, in the last week, if that trend continues, we will be, look at this as also an indicator that we are moving in the right direction. So, the last of the three criteria is hospitals. And under hospitals, there are two metrics. The first is to treat all patients without crisis care. And the current status of the San Diego County hospital capacity, bed availability, and decreasing hospitalizations and ICU admissions due to COVID-19, we do not currently need to utilize a crisis care model based on everything we are seeing today. But that could certainly change, and we continue to manage and the data and report on the data so we can be... the data so we can be aware of what is going on. So if we go to the second metric, this is a robust testing program in place for at least for at-risk healthcare workers, including emerging antibody testing. So the first metric, we have met. The second is in process, and I will talk in a few minutes about the laboratory task force that has been conducted. On this slide, we just want to show, and this is data that's presented or reported to the California Health and Human Services Open Data, based on daily reporting by our local hospitals in each county, and this is specifically for San Diego. The total hospital capacity in San Diego is approximately 6,500 beds. And this line is just included there for scale, because if we included the total 6,500, or even where we are at capacity now, which is about 4,500 patients, of the total 6,500 capacity are hospitalized. And of that number, 320, that's represented by March 19th, 320, or 7%, are COVID-19 confirmed or suspect patients. So currently, we are about 68% capacity in San Diego County. Again, this is just additional information showing a downward trend of hospitalizations in general for the past 14 days. And as it shows, there is a steeper decline in the past five days, if you look at that, from April 15th to the 19th. And we will continue to monitor these data to determine if this trend holds. The fifth and last metric is relating to testing. Since our last presentation to your board, local testing capacity by routine polymerase chain reaction, or PCR, testing has increased. County Public Health Laboratory testing has increased from about 310 tests per day to, we currently now have the capacity of 1,000-plus tests. We have the CDC platform, the Abbott M2000 platform, and the Fusion or Hologic platform, which can test in a 24-hour period up to 1,000 tests. And these tests can be turned around within a 24-hour period. We now have seven hospitals, which is up from six hospitals previously, as well as one federally qualified health center, that is, family health centers of San Diego. This capacity has increased from approximately 1,500 daily tests previously to now over 2,000 daily tests. The testing capacity of commercial laboratories has remained constant. While the region has increased laboratory testing systems or not currently testing to the maximum regional capacity, re-recognizing this gap, on April 17th, a laboratory testing task force was developed, and the goals or aims there are to identify gaps and opportunities for increasing our region's testing capacity, to identify a niche for each testing sector, and to develop a strategy to conduct serology testing in San Diego County. And we also will be looking, in this particular slide, we talked about PCR, which is in the blue, we also now have the capacity to conduct rapid testing, which can be completed anywhere from 15 minutes to two hours. And our county public health laboratory now has that capability. There are six hospitals that have that capability. So the six California indicators are from the governor's roadmap to opening up the executive orders of stay-at-home. And these are the six indicators that were mentioned earlier, and I will go through each of them briefly. The first, the first indicator is the ability to monitor and protect our communities through testing, contract tracing, isolation, and supporting those who are positive or exposed. I've already reviewed the focus of the county-wide laboratory testing task force and its objectives, and the current county laboratory testing capacity, which has increased over the past two weeks from about 1,500 to over 3,000 tests capacity per day. The county-wide lab testing task force is working to implement a proposed and comprehensive action plan. Our public health laboratory is focusing testing on other vulnerable populations, in addition to the priorities that are already outlined by the federal government. We hope to increase testing in individuals with HIV, low-income populations, and individuals from various racial groups, as well as Native Americans. The county has also developed an action plan to increase contact tracing, and has surged staffing capacity to support this effort as our COVID-19 cases increase. Public health housing accommodations are in place to support isolation for those who are positive but not sick enough to be hospitalized or do not have suitable accommodations to self-isolate and support those who have been exposed and need housing accommodations. Currently, the county has contracted over 1,700 hotel rooms and is in partnership with UCSD for an alternative care site location that was spoken about earlier. Testing has also prioritized for these populations, those hospitalized, long-term care facility, staff, and residents, as well as our healthcare workers, first responders, and other essential So the second indicator is the ability to prevent infection in people who are at risk for more severe COVID-19 infections. There has been a lot of activity occurring in this area. Early on, a strong recommendation was issued for older adults, especially those 65 years of age and older, to stay at home. And additionally, stay-at-home strongly, was strongly recommended in our health officer's order for those also with chronic medical conditions, heart disease, lung disease, asthma, and diabetes, as well as those with compromised immune systems, HIV, and those obtaining cancer treatment. The third indicator is the ability of hospital and health systems to handle surges. As has already been described, the number of hospitalizations is decreasing. Adequate bed capacity, staff, and supplies are currently stable, but that, again, could change as we have to be ready in case we get surges from the border or from our neighboring partners to the east, as well as the north. Weekly meetings with hospitals and community clinics are convened to keep our pulse on what is happening with our hospital capacity. And since April 1st, hospitals have been reporting numerous metrics to the state related to hospitals and ICU admissions and ventilator use. And also, our capacity task force is working with our hospital partners to look at other plans to identify potential surge capacity needs. I would like to, we've skipped the indicator number four because that's related to therapeutic research or research for therapy. Given the fact that there are no related activities for this indicator right now, we will move to indicator number five. The fifth indicator is the ability for businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing. Healthcare orders will continue to support physical distancing in businesses, schools, and childcare facilities. The health officer's order will continue to require posting of social distancing and sanitation protocols at all businesses that are open. The Economic Reopening Advisory Group has been established to advise the county on safe reopening plans. And while the state has issued crisis care, a crisis care document, the local hospital capacity at this time does not warrant its use, but we will have that document in place as it is needed. The last indicator is indicator number six, and this is the ability to determine when to reinstitute measures such as the stay-at-home order, if necessary. As phased approaches are implemented, we will continue to monitor the data metrics reviewed with you, as well as other data metrics that we will follow. These metrics will be reassessed, and we will determine criteria for increasing or decreasing or re-establishing orders and recommendations. The guidance for the public continues to be the same. Follow the governor's executive order to stay at home, and recommendation to cover your face. Practice social distancing, maintaining six feet between individuals if you are not household members. Continue good handwashing practices, and if you are sick, stay home and self-isolate. If your symptoms worsen, contact your healthcare provider. In closing, a phased-in approach must be in alignment with the governor's executive directive. As we prepare to ease the public health order restrictions, we will begin with parks, trails, and beaches, water sports, boating, golf courses, basketball and tennis courts, as well as other open spaces with certain restrictions. Looking ahead, individuals will be asked to continue social distancing strategies if they are not with household members, and to wear the facial covering when in public. Cities and related business sectors will be asked to develop a plan, which will be posted and filled out and provided to the county by April 28th. These entities will continue to comply with the governor's directive for no gathering other than family units unless specified otherwise, to adhere to and practice social distancing practices, to enforce facial coverings as practical, and cities and related businesses will be required to have sanitation procedures, and cities will be asked to ensure the following: If bathrooms are open, they must be cleaned and have cleaning protocols and conduct a routine sanitation, and ensure onsite staff security to ensure these restrictions are being met. Restrict parking to half-capacity at parks, beaches, and other public sites. Also, play equipment remains closed, recreational centers will remain closed, and no organized team activities will be allowed, but individuals may exercise in public spaces. And lastly, municipalities must have enforcement plans worked out with their local law enforcement jurisdiction. Now I would like to pass it back to Andy Pease.
Good morning. Currently, we are spending at a rate of approximately $14 million a month for our COVID-19 response efforts, with a fiscal year-end projected total cost around $60 million. Now, these costs include things such as surveillance, monitoring, sanitation, medical support, behavioral health, public health services, other frontline work, administrative support, and for acquisition of ventilators, PPEs, lab equipment, and hotels for care and shelter needs. At this time, we are covering these expenditures with county general fund dollars. However, we are seeking reimbursement from various federal and state sources. Perhaps the largest source of funding will be the CARES Act dollars. The third phase of the federal stimulus plan, called the CARES Act, includes $150 billion for states, counties, and cities to address COVID-19. These funds are being allocated based on population to all states, as well as local governments with a population over 500,000. Over $15.3 billion is allocated to California. On April 14th, the county of San Diego submitted a certification letter to the U.S. Treasury to have our share of these funds provided directly to the county rather than through the state. The U.S. Treasury has committed to having these funds issued by April 24th, this coming Friday, and we anticipate the county of San Diego's amount will be approximately $330 million. This money can be used for the following: any necessary expenditure incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19; it can only cover expenses that were not accounted for in the most recently approved budget; and it can cover costs that are between the period of March 1st through December 30th, 2020. Now, at this point in time, this is all the information we have on how these funds can be used, and admittedly, it's not a lot. The U.S. Treasury has indicated that they will be providing additional information on the eligible use of these funds in the coming days. One thing we have been told is that these funds cannot be used to cover lost revenue. Shortly, Tracy Sandoval will be providing you an update on the economic impact of COVID-19, including revenue shortfalls. The CARES Act funding, as it stands today, cannot cover these shortfalls. Now, the county has, with our D.C. representatives, as well as the National Association of Counties, been advocating to get an allowance for increased flexibility in the use of these funds to include things such as revenue loss. And there has been a significant amount of discussion and efforts with Phase 3.2 or 3.5 of the federal bill that's coming forward now to allocate additional money to states and local governments, which would be specific for general revenue relief and include an amendment to the CARES Act to include coverage for lost revenue. However, at this time, it appears that is not going forward with this phase. However, we have been told that there will be efforts to try to include it in perhaps Phase 4.0. Now, besides these federal dollars, we will be, continue to pursue FEMA funding, and as well as utilizing various state emergency funding as it becomes available. I'll now turn the presentation over to Tracy Sandoval on the economic impact of COVID-19.
Thanks, Andy. The impact of COVID-19 on the region and the county's response to the pandemic is estimated to have a significant fiscal impact in the current fiscal year, which will be discussed more in detail as part of our third-quarter budget status update to your board in mid-May. While much remains unknown, the economic turmoil caused by the pandemic will certainly affect the county's finances, both by increasing expenses and diminishing revenue. This slide summarizes what is known to date. However, these numbers will continue to be reassessed as we move forward. On the revenue side, we anticipate impacts to several county funding sources, both directly and indirectly. Preliminary estimates indicate a total revenue shortfall estimated somewhere between $260 and $395 million in the coming fiscal year. As Andy mentioned, the county continues to advocate for more flexibility in the CARES Act funds to help cover lost revenue, which is not currently allowed. We anticipate our largest shortfall to be in the area of sales tax revenue, which supports a variety of critical services provided by the county, including social services, child protective services, behavioral health, and public health programs through realignment funding, as well as critical public safety services funded by Prop 172 and public safety health realignment, or, excuse me, public safety realignment dollars. But we also expect to see declines in our general purpose revenues due to lower property taxes from delinquencies, from interest earnings, and transient occupancy taxes, or TOT, as well as our Mental Health Services Act dollars and our gas tax revenues. In terms of expenses, the increases in unemployment will undoubtedly increase the need for the county's safety net assistance programs, including general relief, the IHSS maintenance of effort, and administration and cost sharing of various eligibility programs. In total, these are estimated to increase costs by about $8.3 million. We are also anticipating significant market losses in the retirement fund. As of the end of March, the retirement fund sits at a negative 8% return for fiscal year to date. The return as of June 30th will ultimately determine the actual impact to the county's retirement contributions beginning in fiscal year 2122. Should we experience a loss of, let's say, negative 7% for the year, you can see the increase in retired contributions of $26 million to start, and grows to $171 million since losses are smooth over a five-year period. Further, if the retirement board continues their gradual reduction of the assumed rate of return, down to 6.75% in 2022, the increase could grow to $216 million by fiscal year 2526. Our focus is now refining these numbers as we rebuild a recommended budget to present to your board in July. Also, we are seeing a higher level of delinquencies in our collection of property taxes, and in particular, its effect on our cash flows with regards to the county's teeter plan. So let's take a look a little closer. Adopted by the county in the early '90s, the teeter plan gives the region an alternative method for distributing property taxes. Under this Under this plan, participating taxing agencies, which are primarily schools and smaller special districts, receive the total amount of their property taxes for the fiscal year regardless of the amount of property taxes actually collected. The county will advance the full amount to make these taxing agencies whole and in exchange gets to keep all future interest and penalties charged to the property owners. As required by law, the county must also maintain a teeter tax loss reserve fund. These funds are set aside to cover losses from delinquent properties that default and are sold for less than the amount of taxes and assessments owed. The amount in this fund must be equal to 25% of the current year's delinquent taxes and assessments of the teeter agencies. Because of the economic impacts of COVID-19, we are experiencing a higher level of delinquencies than in years past. Collections through April 17th leaves $283 million of unpaid property taxes, representing a 4.1% delinquency rate. The increasing amount of delinquencies has a threefold impact on county finances. First, the county will need to advance almost $174 million to the teeter agencies in June, based on delinquency property tax revenue that has not yet been received. Second, because of the amount of delinquent property taxes has increased, the amount that the county must set aside in the teeter tax loss reserve fund has also increased by $40.4 million. And thirdly, increased property tax delinquencies reduce the amount of the county's revenue from property taxes, creating a shortfall of an estimated $40.6 million to our general fund this fiscal year. We will continue to closely monitor these impacts over the next several months as we prepare for the upcoming budget. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Don to conclude.
Thanks, Tracy. In closing, we recommend your board take the following actions with respect to item number two. Number one, ratify all actions previously taken in response to this local health emergency and local emergency. Number two, take any other actions necessary to address COVID-19 pandemic emergency response. And with respect to item 19, we recommend your board, number one, establish appropriations of $40.4 million to meet tax loss revenue requirement of the teeter tax loss revenue fund based on prior year available unassigned general fund balance. And number two, authorize the auditor and controller to establish a commitment in the general fund for the teeter plan advance in the amount of $173.9 million. This concludes our presentation.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the discussion now. My understanding is we have a group presentation and 29 requests to speak, although that'll depend on the number of call-ins that we get. So let me ask clerk of the board if he would like to proceed with the group presentation and then maybe give us some idea of the individual speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we do have a group presentation. We have four of the five members of that group ready to speak. And then we have 24 individual speakers that are ready to address the board. So begin with the group presentation. We'll provide 15 minutes. That group presentation includes Gina Cordota, Rachel Randolph, Monica Sakazawa, Elizabeth Nunez and David Garcia. I'll turn it over to Aaron Demarest to call the speakers. And we will be identifying the speakers by the last four digits of your phone number or by your name if you have registered to speak. You'll hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the record and you'll have, for the group, you'll have 15 minutes to address the board. Now to remind the speakers that they should mute their TV or live stream before they begin speaking.
Thank you. We'll begin with David Garcia, last four digits, 3640.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Madam CEO. My name is David Garcia. I'm the president of SEIU Local 221 and I am proud to represent and be the voice of more than 10,000 county workers that are on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic in San Diego. For two weeks, we've had virtual meetings with our members who are speaking out about safety concerns on the job. We've heard from hundreds of healthcare and other frontline staff that are calling for increased health and safety protection and these voices have amplified for, in several media outlets. These frontline employees need proper protective equipment, PPNEs and other safety equipment, including gloves and hand sanitizers. We have shared our survey with this board showing that 90% of those surveyed frontline health and human service staff reported either no access or limited access to respirators and masks. Every day, we get calls from our members about their concerns and we are responding. In addition to raising these issues with this board, we are supporting the county's needs by also raising this with our state legislators and the governor. This morning, SEIU launched a new web-based Cal OSHA complaint form as a resource for employees to document health and safety violations, including inadequate PPNEs. And now it's time for the county to respond. This is why we are submitting more than 1,000 petitions demanding that county workers, county protect all workers. Frontline employee demands include the county provide adequate PPNEs to all personnel required to work during the COVID-19 pandemic. Use all available resources, including county reserves, to obtain the N95s and other PPNEs. You are getting resources now from the federal government. We need those to be invested in these PPNEs that our members need. The county should join other employers across multiple sectors and provide hazard pay to all personnel required to work during the COVID-19 pandemic. These workers are on the frontline and in harm's way as they deal with folks that do have COVID-19 or potentially have COVID-19. The county must lobby state and federal governments to use their emergency powers to direct the private sector to produce additional N95 respirators and other PPNEs needed for essential frontline staff. Finally, the county must work with us on our COVID-19 bargaining proposals, which address these and other critical issues. Frontline employees are stepping up to the challenge of the COVID-19 pandemic, but we will not sacrifice our safety to do that. I also want to close by saying that SEIU is standing with our partners at the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. We support the recommendations in the letter to ensure that all of us, particularly vulnerable communities, are healthy and safe during this crisis. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker from the group presentation is Dr. Monica Sakazawa.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and members of the board. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. My name is Monica Faroni Sakazagawa. I'm a doctor in pharmacy and I work for the County of San Diego Psychiatric Hospital, where I've been for the past 20 years and had the privilege of working with Dr. Woodton, Dr. McDonald, Dr. Mosher, many others. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of my pharmacy team, the pharmacists, the pharmacy techs, as well as the staff from public health and behavioral health. The pharmacists, the nursing, microbiology, the MHAs, mental health clinicians, we're all frontline. And we've been addressing the hazard pay thing. I'm here to talk about health and not property tax. So I'm focusing the funding just for the health portion. They're two different parts. So we are addressing hazard pay and a strong safe work, safety balance and for PPE, just like Mr. Garcia said. Part of this whole deal is we are not teleworking. We are in front of these patients, taking their vitals, giving them medications, consulting, and I can't emphasize enough that we had a patient come up to our window at the pharmacy and tell us, "Oh, I think I have COVID." So I just want you to feel the impact of what all of these workers, your workers, employees are doing day to day, having to come home and wash their gear and take a shower, two showers a day because they have to disinfect so that they don't infect their households. In the pharmacy, we've been pretty understaffed, actually severely understaffed for many years. We've been using registry, which is all taken up now. They're all working for sharpened scripts because they're paying more. So the expansion of hours that we have gone from five days a week now seven days a week, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. with no differential, it's stretching us very thin and we're trying, six pharmacists are trying to cover these shifts. We've agreed to temporarily meet this because of COVID, but I do think we need to come back to the table and find out what's financially responsible and what does work for healthcare. But along those lines, not everybody, we are trying to keep our distance with some of us teleworking and some of us being frontline workers. There are drop downs in our chronos that I know of that can differentiate. And so, but I feel, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of all of my staff, as well as all the other healthcare workers, the people that are working there and dealing with the patients right there on the frontline, they need to be paid. We're stepping up and I think that I would like to see the county come and meet us halfway with making some kind of an allowance or a stipend for us to reward us. And I mean, we're calling you to try to do the right thing and invest in your employees who are taking a risk every day and going in front of all of these people that we don't know if they have COVID or not, but we are still treating. And I think in the final words that I want to say is that we definitely know that you are going to have to allocate your funds every which way, but there is money. So I'm really hoping that you can help microbiology. They're a very small department as well and they're the ones doing the testing, like Dr. Woodton said. They are pushing themselves and running themselves thin. I can sign in on the Saturday and Sunday that I have to come in and I see labs there trying to run tests. So please, please, please try to think of your frontline workers. We're all asking for hazard pay. We appreciate all the thank yous, but the lip service is done. We would really like for you to show us financially that you appreciate it, that knowing that you appreciate and value us as your frontline workers means more to us right now in this time. Thank you.
For the group's benefit, you have six minutes and 10 seconds left.
The next speaker from the group is Elizabeth Nunez, last four digits, 2229.
Hello, good morning. My name is Elizabeth Farias. I am a booking clerk at San Diego Central Jail and a proud four-year county employee. Employees like me in the inmate processing division are concerned about the lack of personal protective equipment available to us. We also are concerned about the lack of communication about exposure to COVID-19 in inmates and deputies. I spoke to another booking clerk at Central Jail who has exposed, who was exposed to an inmate who tested positive to COVID-19. This coworker was never informed of her exposure by the county. She found out by watching the news. This booking clerk also found out all the deputies who had contact with an inmate received self-quarantine time off, but she did not. We urge to, we urge you to protect all workers and address all issues like this. I also ask you to support the demands and the more than 1,000 protect all workers petitions submitted to date, including implementing more workplace safe health and safety measures, providing full pay to employees who are unable to work and hazard pay for those of us who have to work in intake detention facilities. Please support the Invest in San Diego demands letters as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker from the organized presentation is Gina Cordota, last four digits, 2968.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and members of the board, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of myself and my coworkers. My name is Gina Cordato. I have been a protective services worker in child welfare services in the adoptions program for six years. As you know, child welfare services' primary purpose is to serve children and families and to keep children safe from abuse and neglect. I hope this information is received as an opportunity to better serve our children, families and PSWs in the adoptions program who are getting conflicting directives from agency management regarding in-person, face-to-face, monthly contacts. Many of the protective services workers in the adoptions program are not priority level one workers and are not investigating emergency response referrals. On 4/15/2020, the adoptions program was directed by management to do in-person monthly contact visits with minimal PPEs for the month of April, including out-of-county placements. Several adoption PSWs are very concerned about the children and families on their caseloads who could give or get COVID-19 from this contact and that PSWs could transmit it to their families from traveling in and out of the county. The directive that came from the State of California Health and Human Services Department of Social Services, the Children's Bureau, the Administration of Children and Families, San Diego County CWS Director and the Governor of the State of California were clear to not do in-person monthly contact visits if we were not level one workers. And on 4/17/2020, the governor declared that in-person visitation was prohibited so that other measures such as video conferencing would fulfill the in-person contact so that county workers would not spread the virus to our caregivers, children and ourselves. Some adoption PSWs, including myself, asked their supervisors if the COVID-19 update that came out on 4/17/2020 from our director stating that video conferencing is appropriate would mean that we did not need to do in-person visitation. We were told that the decision to do in-person visitation still stands. To do these visits, we were given one COVID-9 and N95 mask that we were told could be used more than once unless we were exposed to COVID while doing an in-person visit. I feel ethically conflicted that I am going against the governor's order, the Health and Human Services, Department of Social Services, California Children's Bureau and the Administration of Children and Families and our CWS director's order. And I'm terrified about the possibility that I could spread or get the virus. Others feel the same. Again, I hope this information is received as an opportunity to better serve our children, families and PSWs in the adoptions program who are getting conflicting directives from agency management regarding in-person visitation. And I hope that we can get some clarity and direction about which policy best applies here so that we can continue to protect our children and their caregivers as well as our staff. Thanks for letting me speak today.
Thank you. And that concludes the organized presentation on this item. Now we'll turn to the individual speakers on item number two. As I unmute you, if you could please confirm your first and last name for the record, and then you will each have two minutes to address the board. Again, you'll each have two minutes to address the board. We'll begin with San Marcos Mayor Rebecca Jones, last four digits, 2847.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm so grateful for the hard work by you Chair Cox and supervisors Jacob Gaspar, Desmond and Fletcher, as well as all of the leadership by Dr. Nick, Dr. Woodton, Dr. McDonald and all of county staff. These unprecedented times have called for us to work hard as a region and I'm so proud for all that we've done so far. San Marcos is following all of the guidelines from the county and the state and we will continue to encourage our residents and businesses to do the same. It's essential that we follow the advice of the public health officials. We are keeping our community informed with timely and accurate information and we are dedicated to the COVID response page that we have on our website now. We're continuously updating our residents with social media posts and email alerts. We appreciate the support of the county and our neighboring cities and we will get through this together. We will have all of our plans to you quickly as requested. Multiple San Marcos and North County businesses are involved in developing scientific remedies and equipment to fight COVID-19. And San Marcos has been a leader in assisting our business community with $3 million loan program. As of April 20th, we have approved $2.17 million in funding for 79 businesses locally. We've been sending out the San Diego, we've been sending out the San Diego Back to Work Survey developed by County Supervisor Jim Desmond's office to encourage local businesses to have a plan in place to come back. So my hopes are that we can work together as a region to get people back to work with plenty of safeguards to help them stay both healthy and able to financially provide for their families. It's been said that Governor Newsom is planning opening back on June 8th. We have many businesses that are fearful, that need to open their doors soon or will close. or will close their doors forever if they cannot do so. I believe we are leaders in this region, in San Diego County, and I believe with innovation and sound medical leadership, we can create a program with safeguards that can lead both our state and country to prioritize both safety and economic prosperity. I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and do my part to move our county forward to make this all happen. We have all done so much together for our stay-at-home order, and I am concerned with the border to our south. I'm concerned with the free movement of essential workers from Mexico to the U.S. and also U.S. citizens living in Mexico, since Mexico was not under the same stay-at-home orders as we are in California. I am concerned to hear that we are seeing a trend of much higher numbers of COVID-19 in our southern cities and that there is a trend that most likely is due to free movement of workers. I ask that we work to come up with a plan and continue to keep our county safe. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I genuinely appreciate all county leadership and staff for working so hard to keep our communities safe. San Marcos is here as a partner, and we look forward to continuing all the hard work to bringing our, our county back to prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angelina Corsani, last four digits, 9358. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
My name is Angelina Corsani, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Central Policy Initiative. We're proud partners in the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. Today, we're here today because we need you to take immediate action to protect the health and livelihood of individuals, families, and our communities, especially the working people who the COVID crisis is most adversely affecting. Low-wage workers who are predominantly people of color in our communities are being hit first and hardest by the economic and community impacts of COVID-19. Low-income workers in San Diego are experiencing every aspect of this crisis. Some must continue to work even when their employers refuse to provide safe working conditions and protective equipment. These working people must choose between placing themselves and their family members at risk of contracting this deadly virus or falling even deeper into poverty. Many people are afraid to come forward and stand up for what they need for fear of retaliation. Others have lost their jobs or significant portions of their income due to this crisis, and they're struggling to figure out how to feed and shelter their families. This moment calls for real leadership. We're asking that you show up for San Diego's working families by creating an office that ensures workers are able to get accurate information about their rights and resources during and beyond this crisis. To reach all workers, the county should fund and collaborate with trusted community organizations to do outreach and education of working people throughout the county. The county should be a model for good employment by ensuring workplace health and safety measures for all county employees and providing resources to county employees to ensure fair access to telecommuting. The county should, should use its authority to uphold the safety and well-being of contracted employees. You can do this by requiring all employers with contracts with the county or those asking for fee waivers, subsidies, deferral of fees, or other public supports to adhere to all new and existing paid sick leave policies. You must also require that these employers recall employees laid off during the crisis before hiring any new employees for at least six months after the end of this public emergency. Finally, overwhelming number of workers has so many lost their jobs and means to basically leading necessities. We call on the county to advocate at the state level to increase income support such as unemployment benefits and funds for undocumented workers who still lack access to relief despite paying taxes. This is a critical time, and right now the residents of San Diego need support from this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Belen Hernandez Garcia, last four digits, 3735.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Belen Hernandez. I am speaking on behalf of the Mid-City Community Advocacy Network. We are also a partner of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. And today my call is to urge you to continue the efforts to make testing and treatment centers available throughout the county prioritizing low-income communities, communities with high percentages of confirmed COVID-19 cases in areas with limited access to or smaller healthcare centers. Additionally, we work with many youth in the community, and we urgently need no-cost counseling and mentoring services available to youth. All San Diego's without health insurance should be fully covered by Medi-Cal, including people with substance abuse disorders or regardless of their immigration status. Please consider all of our recommendations. Thank you for the work you have been actively doing to serve our communities, and we look forward to improving your policy solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Samuels, last four digits, 2822.
Good morning, Board of Supervisor. My name is Deborah Samuels, and I live in North Park in a senior apartment. My income is based on social security. I'm a cancer survivor, and I have a brother who has cancer now and is struggling with addiction for a long time now. So with the COVID-19, I'm more and more worried about my brother if he would really receive a good treatment that he needs. With a limited income, I'm still helping with food and things that he may need. That means that my income is no longer enough to pay my own bills. So I have also a car that needs fixing. I don't know if I would ever, ever able to fix it because I need to get around when I need to go buy my groceries or to see if my brother have any need. So right now, we need a moratorium on utilities in this crisis. We are spending not just on our own needs, but also on our loved ones that do not have anything. In community where a volunteer, they are getting evicted. So right now, not a single family, I said, should stay without a roof over their head. So I ask you to prioritize emergency housing for all unsheltered San Diegan and stop all eviction, even if they are undocumented or they have documents, because we never leave anyone behind. So this is a moral thing I think you, you will need to do. Thank you, Board of Supervisor, for giving me this time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Esmeralda Flores with last four digits, 2438.
Thank you. Good morning, Board Chair Jacob and Supervisors Cox, Gaspar, Fletcher, and Desmond. My name is Esmeralda Flores. I'm the Immigrant Rights and B international Affairs Advocate for the ASLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. We are members of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition and are here to uplift the request for additional data to be provided by the county's Public Health Department made by ISDF, as well as Planned Parenthood Pacific Southwest, Health Center Partners of Southern California, and the San Diego LGBT Center. We are requesting that the county provide additional demographic data associated with COVID-19 testing, positive cases, hospitalization, and that disaggregated by race, ethnicity, gender identity, and whether a person is an essential worker. We were glad to see that the county started to provide zip code and racial data as part of the daily updates and believe that the additional information that we are requesting will provide a clearer picture about how COVID-19 is impacting our community. We know from data that has been shared across the country that COVID-19 is hitting Black, Latinx, and Native American communities harder, and we must understand the impact in San Diego. It is also critical that we ensure that the health and safety of every person in our community is prioritized. Social distancing is not an option in a detention center or jail as people share toilets, showers, and cells. According to the CDC, we know these conditions are dangerous and even deadly. No one, whether they are a citizen or an immigrant, should be forced to live in conditions that imperil their lives during this public health crisis. We must immediately reduce the number of people in jails and immigration detention. Given the history of medical neglect in the O.T.M. Detention Center and San Diego County Jail, we ask that you call on leadership at these facilities to act and protect lives by releasing as many people as possible. Ask them to release high-risk individuals and to reduce the number of those newly arrested and detained. In addition, we ask that you coordinate with O.T.M. Detention Center and the jail to ensure that people being released have a place to go and if needed, can be placed in housing secured by the county. Thank you for your public service and for your leadership to respond to this crisis.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jose Franco Garcia, 5694.
Hi, thank you Supervisors for this opportunity. I thank you for your, the information and your leadership right now. I am Jose Franco Garcia. I'm with the Environmental Health Coalition, but I'm also part of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. And first of all, I wanted to echo supporting all the other, you know, demands that the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition expressed to the county board and has expressed here today. Specifically today, I wanted to talk about taking, taking action on transparency and making information available for all. And I'll say that I was, as I was listening today to the early part of the, to the, you know, the, the meeting so far, I was actually, you know, happy to know how much of the information I had already or how much of this information I had access to. And I was, you know, struck by the fact that part of it is because I am an English speaker and, you know, I'm, I'm grateful to have access to a computer, access to internet, all of that information and all of the technology that provides me the easy, well, the opportunity to be able to access this information. Sometimes it's easier to access, sometimes it's more difficult. But as I looked around today, I did find, you know, a number that people could text to, to get updates and other things like that. And as, and as an organization, as an environmental health coalition, a nonprofit organization that works within the community, we've been reaching out to a lot of residents. And, you know, a lot of the residents, a lot of members that we work with have not had access to the same information we have had. Things that I keep hearing over and over, keep seeing on the internet, they didn't know about. That, you know, even the phone number of 211, a lot of people have not known about. And we're not, you know, we're trying to do what we can, but I don't think the information is getting out there to that, to as many people as it could and then accessible in all the different languages. I, you know, I see through your website and your 211 website, all of the different translations that are there available. But, you know, for folks who do not have that internet access or maybe, maybe aren't even aware of it, they, you know, this information is a lot harder to come by. So whatever we can do to keep, you know, funding up to allow the translation to happen, but then continue to, you know, beef that up and make sure that more people have access to this. Also, the current press briefings that are happening that are very informative are only available in English and American sign language. So the more that we can do with that, especially if we start to get into this time of how we're going to change restrictions and things are going to happen, the more access that people can have that information, the safer that they can keep themselves, their families, and the community around them. So I really encourage you to, you know, allow transparency and access to information to, to continue as it is and get better as we move forward. It's a very crucial time, and we really need to have access to all of that information, all of our community does. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay Lachelle, last four digits, 8099.
Good morning. My name is Lindsay Lachelle. I'm a San Diego native, a homeowner, a renter, and a proud business owner. My company, Diamond Branch Marketing Group, is a certified benefit corporation located in North Park, though I employ residents of the second, third, and fourth districts. I'm on the Board of Directors for Business for Good, an advocacy group of local business owners that is also a member of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. As a side note, I myself have filed for unemployment insurance so that I can continue to pay most of my employees most of their salaries while maintaining their health insurance benefits despite a significant loss of business because of the pandemic. This morning, I canceled meetings with potential clients to talk to this group about the protections for workers that we absolutely can't afford and must prioritize. First, everyone in California who lost their employment as a result of the state-mandated shutdown of businesses should be eligible for, eligible for unemployment insurance or other aid regardless of employment classification or immigration status. Second, accessible and equitable telecommuting work should be available to every possible public and private employee, including providing free universal broadband internet access. Third, every employer who benefits from public loans, grants, or county contracts should be held to the state-mandated standards of paid sick time and family leave. Finally, the county of San Diego should absolutely require employees to provide PPE, hand sanitizer, and other workplace safety equipment for absolutely every human being who is being compelled to work outside of their own homes. These four requests are either California state policy, common sense, or human decency. More than that, they are closely linked from a cost-benefit perspective. PPE and telecommuting help reduce the need for sick leave, which helps decrease the demand for unemployment benefits, which helps prevent eviction, which keeps the property taxes rolling in, which ensures none of you have to file for unemployment insurance. Please recognize your opportunity to allocate an influence for the immediate safety and ongoing security of every San Diegan. Thank you.
Thank you. Paola Martinez Montes, 7610.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, Supervisors, and CAO. My name is Paola Martinez Montes, and I'm the Invest in San Diego Families Campaign Manager and a resident of District One. Since 2015, the ISDF Coalition has united around a mission to make San Diego County a place where all families thrive regardless of zip code, race, place of origin, or income. The COVID-19 pandemic has made it clear that we still have a ways to go in meeting that goal. While this crisis is affecting everyone, the vast inequality in our region has made some communities even more vulnerable to the negative economic and health impacts of COVID-19. On April 6th, our coalition sent you an email outlining our COVID-19 community demands. We are here today demanding that you act boldly and decisively to immediately relieve the suffering of working families across the county. There are demands in our letter that range from the county's ability to provide vital information for all residents in multiple languages and platforms to ensure families impacted are housed, fed, healthy regardless of immigration status. You will continue to hear from members of the ISDF Coalition who will present our community demands and have been, and why you must take immediate action. Over 140 community members, many of whom could not be here today, have emailed you in support of the demands that are being presented and will continue to do so until the proper actions to protect San Diegans are taken, and they are no longer just surviving, but thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patricia Mendoza, 6789.
Hi, yes, good morning. My name is Patricia Mendoza. I live in the city of Imperial Beach, and I am a member of ACE and, and the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. I am here in support of COVID-19 demands and demands for more resources for housing. I'm sorry. As a hard-working parent of two children who has recently been laid off due to COVID-19 pandemic, I know how hard it is firsthand and how hard it is to make it through these tough times. After being laid off, I was worried sick about how I was going to afford to pay my rent in April and take care of my kids. I started to apply at different grocery stores, but they wouldn't hire me because I have asthma. This makes it harder for me, and I'm really scared during these times right now to leave my kids to go look for a job and risk getting sick and spreading the virus to my children. If it wasn't for a phone call that I received from ACE a few weeks ago, I don't know where I would be right now. Thanks to ACE for reaching out to me, I found out that there was a, that there was a moratorium here in Imperial Beach and what I needed to do to be protected. Now I'm helping to reach out to my friends and neighbors to make sure they know their rights also. As I learn more about this, as I learn more and more about this, I'm learning that there are not many places to go for support. We need to invest in making sure that there are resources for tenants and real tenant counseling for families who are struggling right now and even, and, and even after this, and they know their rights and that they can protect themselves also. I hope we can count on your support. Thousands of families like me really need this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roberto Alcantara, 9997.
Good morning, Supervisors. So really, just wanted to be here on behalf of the Chicano Federation to, to talk about our support for the ISDF Coalition's demands. We are proud members of this coalition, and we stand with every one of the points being made today. Particularly today, I want to focus on food access for every San Diegan. We strongly believe that we need to utilize county funds and resources to expand home-delivered meals with a particular focus on meals for seniors, individuals who are immunocompromised, and rural communities where there is a significant need. Right now, the current services are not enough. We're seeing a lot of seniors being left behind, a lot of folks with, you know, immune deficiencies. We currently serve seniors and folks with disabilities in our affordable housing units, and a lot of them have not been able to access the current resources available. So we've had to actually reallocate some of our general operating funds to be able to purchase food for them. able to purchase food for them, uh, and deliver it to their homes, uh, because we have been, found another option, uh, where these folks can get some help. So we strongly urge you to do that. Uh, we've seen a lot of the folks that we serve, uh, reach out to us and say that they're scared to go out, particularly our seniors, and some of them have had to skip meals because, uh, they're trying to make their food last because of the concerns of having to go out to the stores. And so we are doing what we can. We've partnered with Feeding San Diego to try to, um, ease this demand, but we really strongly urge our Supervisors to make an investment in this and help feed our most vulnerable, vulnerable populations during this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Elo Rivera, six four six six.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Sean Elo Rivera. I am the Executive Director of Youth Will and a resident of District Four. And Youth Will is a proud member of the Invest in San Diego Families Coalition. Um, we stand in solidarity with the Coalition's requests that have, have already been laid forth. I'd like to focus specifically on the need for, for, uh, healthcare for all. For our young people, there was a, a really, um, ever mounting mental health crisis even prior to COVID-19. I'm sure each of you on the board have heard the really, really difficult stories of, um, the impacts of that crisis and some of the very, um, tragic outcomes that it has led to. What we've seen is that the, um, the onset of COVID-19 and the derivative effects of, of the health crisis have really, really hit our young folks hard when it comes to mental health. From the loss of counseling services that they once received at school, um, to the loss of their ability to participate in extracurricular activities and other essential programs that helped, uh, maintain their health, to having to see, uh, their parents and families struggle in the very real ways that we've heard over the last few, uh, few minute, few minutes here. Uh, our, our young people are in dire need of counseling, mental health services, and mentorship in this moment. And while we recognize and very much appreciate the hard work the county has done, the resources that are available online, it is very, very important that those resources are invested in even more, that they, uh, that there is a more robust plan put in place specifically to, uh, protect and, and improve the mental health of our young people. And, um, the last addition that I will add to that is that in, it is not enough to simply put these resources on a website and, and, and folks don't get me wrong, I understand how hard you all are working. I had a call with, uh, county staff yesterday. It is deeply appreciated. However, um, that is why we are extending our hand. Uh, the young folks in our community are extending, uh, their hands to you to, to want to work with you to help get the word out about the programs that do exist and to share with you, um, ways to improve, um, on, on, on providing resources to our young people. So, once again, I will just reiterate that there was a mental health crisis for young people prior to COVID-19, that crisis has only gotten worse, and I hope that the Board of Supervisors will help our young people by investing in, in that, um, in those critical resources accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Cox, five seven four three.
Thank you, uh, and, uh, I really appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate the work the Board is doing. I've been listening to this meeting. I certainly appreciate, appreciate and understand the enormous economic and financial impact. Uh, I think that only hits home the need to attempt to return, uh, our economy and as well as our way of life to as much normalcy as we can. Uh, this is obviously a huge public threat. Uh, I take a backseat, uh, into knowing in terms of knowing that because, uh, uh, not only have I recovered personally from COVID, I have three friends that have survived, uh, visits to the ICU and, and being on ventilators. So I certainly appreciate the, uh, the magnitude of this public health crisis and, uh, understand, however, that returning to economic and, uh, lifestyle normalcy is extremely important, uh, not only for the county's financial health, but also for the ability of working families as I've just heard from many who, uh, are having a, a struggle. Uh, I'm, I'm in particular talking right now about a small item, but a very important one to many people in this county, and that is the ability to exercise and, uh, achieve some level of public health. Uh, I've spent a, a few weeks in bed, uh, fighting this, uh, illness and one of the main sources of exercise I have is to walk a golf course. Uh, other people walk trails and other people get exercise in other fashion. Several counties in this state, many counties in this state, in fact, many states around the country have opened up golf courses to, uh, walkers, uh, on the idea that this will enable, uh, a, a, a segment of the population to get some level of exercise. Uh, already Riverside County opened up yesterday, Orange, Ventura, Santa Clara, Placer, many of these counties have had more hard hit than San Diego. And I would urge the Board to consider a limited, very limited, uh, very safe, uh, with very specific restrictions on social distancing and the ability, uh, of people to get out and get some exercise and, uh, that not only will improve their physical health, but will also improve their mental health and being able to leave their homes. I realize this may pale in importance next to the ability of families to put, put on the table. I certainly will be speaking in other venues about reopening our economy on a safe basis and achieving a level of, uh, economic, uh, you know, uh, improvement for, uh, working families that are so suffering. However, uh, today I urge you to, uh, take action, to just make a small step and, uh, open up opportunities for recreation and exercise as other counties have done around the nation and, and, uh, certainly in, in California. I also would urge you to consider that your job as well is to make sure that, uh, the freedoms that we've so cherished and that many of you have fought for are also respected. Uh, I think you're finding in protests around the country, the, uh, the fact that people are, uh, concerned that certain of these laws are, are, are being done in, in, you know, a, a less than, uh, you know, or more, or more restrictive fashion than would normally necessarily be the case. I certainly approve, uh, or supported the stay at home order to prevent a surge. I think we see now that a surge is not necessarily a risk at this time, certainly could come back, but, uh, I think, uh, one of the important things to do is enact regulation that is, uh, rationally based and that is the minimal regulation needed to preserve freedom. In this case, uh, in particular, one I know well is golf. It can be accomplished in a way that, uh, encourages social distancing and prevents the spread of this, uh, uh, evil enemy. And, uh, I urge you to consider, uh, taking action as other counties have done in California. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Falvey, eight one three nine.
Yeah, good morning and thank you for taking my call. I would also like to speak just as a constituent. Um, I think the previous topic was really very apropos. I think it's an example of where the county is, is actually wasting scarce resources. I'll give you an example. Uh, last week, uh, April thirteenth, right, the sheriff's office says you can walk on golf courses. It's on the news channels. It says it's open, people go do it. Uh, last Saturday, the San Diego police rolled four police cars to the Mission Trails Golf Course to chase people off the course who were walking. The officers told people they would get a health order violation of a thousand dollars, even people who are walking alone with their mask, you know, their mouth covered, et cetera. So here's an example, Commissioners, where we have enforcement plans that are disjointed. The information going to the public about what's allowable and not allowable is inconsistent or inaccurate. And we have enforcement agencies who are coming at this very heavy handed at a time when everyone is stressed out. It's not helpful. I would really encourage you to get a consistent policy and a communication to the constituents about what's allowable and what's not allowable, whether it's riding bicycles or walking on golf courses or any of these areas. It's just absurd that we would spend four police officers' time to try and chase people off an open golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Johnson, nine six eight three.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Eric Johnson and I am the General Manager of Morgan Run Club and Resort. Let me first say that I appreciate that all of you and the county officials are doing to protect our communities and understand what a difficult time this is. We believe that our space provides the safest option for physical and mental health for our members. Since the onset of this crisis, we have been at the forefront of safety and compliance. Since the state and county restrictions have been enacted, we have implemented the following procedures for golf and tennis at Morgan Run. The golf course has been available for walking only. No carts have been issued by the club. The cups have been turned upside down to prevent the ball from going in the hole. Flag pins, ball washers, bunker rigs, benches, and all other touch points have been removed from the golf course. On course restrooms have been locked and secured and at least six feet of social distancing has been practiced and enforced by a security staff member patrolling the property. We have not allowed more than four players in a golf group. The golf pro shop has been closed. No loner, uh, equipment or rental clubs have been allowed. Everybody needs to bring their own equipment. The tennis pro shop has been shuttered. Tennis nets have been removed and all other touch points have been removed from the courts. No more than two players were allowed per court with at least six feet, six feet of social distancing enforced by that same security staff member. And the tennis restrooms have been locked and secured. To some of the prior comments, outdoor recreation has been encouraged on the frequently asked questions on the California.gov website, where people can get outside for exercise, walk, and fresh air with at least six feet of social distancing. We believe under these guidelines that golf and tennis are outdoor exercise and are assisting with this practice. For many of our retired civilian and military members, we are providing vital outdoor exercise and mental well-being in a very stressful and uncertain time. We have a hundred and twenty acres of outdoor space that can allow these folks to get outside for really, uh, needed recreation. The city of Sacramento, as well as Orange County, Ventura County, and Riverside County are allowing at least golf with various restrictions. Our Chief Operating Officer, Bob Morris, who is a San Diego County resident, can speak to what he is doing in California as well as nationally to reinforce our commitment to safety and compliance during very uncertain times. As a business, we have had to furlough a hundred and forty-one employees since mid-March and only providing a skeleton crew for curbside food service and security of the property. We strongly encourage to allow needed outdoor recreation for our golf and tennis members and hope this will be taken into consideration to open as soon as possible. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Anuzi, four five three nine.
Hi, uh, my name is Frankie Anuzi and I represent ownership here at, uh, St. Mark Golf Club and Lake House Hotel in Decoy Dockside, um, better known as probably Lake San Marcos to a lot of you. And over, you know, the past month here, uh, we have, our revenues are plunged ninety percent in the past month. We've had to furlough over two hundred and forty employees, um, and only to keep a small staff, uh, to run curbside service, do some, some security, and maintain the golf course on a minimal level. And, um, the frustrating part is, uh, you know, a lot of other golf courses and counties have opened and, uh, with limited, um, you know, services or ability for, to, to let golfers play. And, uh, one of the bigger issues is watching our property slowly fall into, um, apart or disrepair and not being able to fix it due to the lack of revenue that we, that we used to have, um, property wide. Examples are, uh, we don't have a twenty-person crew taking care of two golf courses. Uh, we're down to five or six people just doing the routine maintenance to, to try to, um, just keep the grass at, at bay. Um, weeds are growing in certain areas. Parking lots are getting taken over by weeds, um, and starting to dilapitate our property. So it's the frustrating part on our part for sure. Uh, I know that, um, all the health officials have made, uh, a, a lot of tough decisions to try to, um, mitigate these issues of COVID-19 and try to keep everyone's safety. But we also feel like, uh, we need to start looking at opening, reopening some businesses and especially things that, um, are outdoors, um, used for recreation and, uh, get your mind off of other things, uh, that are going on in the world and to get some exercise as well. We want to make sure our, every staff member's safe, every person, um, that is our, um, customer is high on our priority list to make sure that they're, we have a safe working environment, um, to give them. And there's a ton of things that we, um, have done, just like, uh, a couple of the other, uh, people before me that have spoken. I mean, we have some rules. We only want anybody here fifteen minutes before they tee off. We're only letting foursomes go out and play, no golf carts. That's before we were closed, shut down. Um, we send out, uh, a message before everybody shows up and say, if you've recently been sick or if you, um, have been sick or recovering, that you please stay away from the property. All golfers expected to follow the public guidelines on social distancing. Golfers encouraged to walk the golf course, um, for exercise. I mean, groups are encouraged to send one person into, um, the golf shop or right in front of the golf shop so that we have a limited amount of people that are, um, yeah, with our staff as well. And then we currently, uh, we really suggest that people use debit cards and not cash and credit cards. We eliminated beverage carts, water stations, um, uh, any, any other things on the golf course that people can touch. We've taken, um, the, the cup of the, uh, of where the ball goes into and raised it so that nobody has to go in and reach their hand in there. We've propped open all the doors, um, to the facility so they can use the restroom. Um, we have a on-staff person that is constantly cleaning, uh, all the restrooms that the patrons have access to. And, um, we just try to limit as much as we can. We have, um, basically sanitizer wipes all over the property, um, outside of the building, uh, on separate holes, next to restrooms, everything so people can stay safe, um, even though they want to use, they can have gloves, sanitizer wipes, everything at their disposal. And, um, we encourage, uh, you know, you don't have to putt all the way into the hole if you're within a couple of feet of gimme. And we've removed all bake, breaks from all the bunkers on the golf course as well to try to give, try to make it a limited amount of touching as possible. So we feel like we've done a really good job before we were closed and we just are giving basically, or wanting you to give us the opportunity to reopen and to kind of save our, our business here. We've lost so much revenue in the past thirty, sixty days that it's, it's tough to, to overcome. And, um, I really appreciate everybody on this call and everybody, um, on the Board of Supervisors to, to sit here, um, listen to our concerns and, and at least give us the time of day and, and hear us out to try to make the best decision possible. So, uh, all we ask is, is just to revisit the situation, um, and give us a chance to try to get some of our business back. And I know we can't bring back all two hundred and forty of our employees, but we'd like to bring back fifty, sixty of our employees and, and give them a, um, a chance not to be on, um, unemployment and take care of. And I really appreciate all the time that, that you've given to us and, um, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John McNair, zero zero five four.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and all you are doing during this challenging time. My name is John McNair. I'm the Vice President of Golf for J C Resorts and we oversee seven courses here in San Diego County. I would like to talk to you today about the opportunity of residents back out on the golf courses. Golf is a great individual outdoor activity to recreate. In addition, it is a very safe environment because of the amount of open space. Golf courses typically are a hundred and forty acres and there's an average of a hundred golfers on a course at one time. So there's a ratio of one golfer to more than one acre of open space. As an industry, we have created safety protocols for golf courses, many of which we just heard from recent speakers, by reviewing what other clubs and, and counties have done in California and throughout the U.S. In addition, as an industry, we have the ability to communicate to the courses the protocols you recommend, as all San Diego course managers are members of the San Diego Chapter of the Southern California PGA or Club Managers Association. Thank you for your time and consideration for opening up golf courses for residents to recreate. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff McNeely, zero nine seven one.
Good morning. Thank you, uh, Chairman and members of the Board for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Jeff McNeely. I own a small business in San Marcos called Big Frog Tussin T-Shirts. We work with schools, sports leagues, small businesses, large businesses, and individuals to supply custom-printed t-shirts, branded embroidered polos, hats, and jackets, and more. We will celebrate two years' open on May 2nd. After getting laid off from my job of 21 years, three years ago, I made a decision to invest in my community, to invest in myself, and to live the American dream by starting a business. Business startup is costly, and it's difficult to be successful. It takes hard work and perseverance. The first year, we lost a fair amount of money. In year two, we started a path to profitability, and we had very big dreams for year three. I employ three people, one of which is my son. Our goal was to create a legacy business. The first week of March, events began to cancel, and many of our scheduled jobs canceled. By the time the stay-at-home order was given, business had ground to a halt. After the stay-at-home order, we closed our business. I had to lay off all of my people. My son said he had no idea society was so fragile. Laying off my son was one of the most difficult things I've done in my entire life. Since that time, I've been working on implementing a new way to do business, moving to a more online style of business. I have many fears about the future. I don't know if we'll come out of this as a business or not, but I'm going to try as hard as I can. We've applied for all aid, including PPP and EIDL, and nothing has come yet. I want to thank public health officials and the board of supervisors for all you're doing to keep our people safe. The decisions you are faced with are unprecedented. I have tremendous respect for you, and all of you have my support. During this period of time, like many others, I've dedicated my time to trying to help the community. I've been advocating for small businesses on social media, and I've had conversations with many small business owners. One of the things that has impressed me the most about our business community is how quickly businesses have adapted to this crisis in an effort to keep their staff and customers safe. Businesses have implemented social distancing guidelines, use of gloves, face mask policies, built barriers to protect their employees, come up with new physical layouts, continuous sanitation procedures, contactless delivery of product, hand washing policies, limiting the number of people in their stores and in their environments, and building sanitation stations for all. It's really been nothing short of amazing. In my business, our plan is moving to more online interactions, utilizing the world of Zoom, contactless payments, masks, gloves, constant sanitation, social distancing for employees and customers, and limits to how many people could be in our environment. I have faith and trust in all of you to provide guidelines for us to do business in a safe manner. I believe that businesses will adapt to those guidelines. By working together, we can put public safety first and save our economy from potential ruin. I want to thank you for listening. I'm praying for you all, and I'm on your side. I'll do anything I can to help you and our community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sherry, Steve Munson, 5595. Again, Steve Munson, 5595.
Good morning, Board Chairman Cox and members of the board. My name is Steve Munson. My wife and I founded Dos Estrellas Brewery in 2013. We're part of the food and beverage and hospitality business. COVID-19 has prevented, has presented us with major difficulties. Our passion is wearing thin. It has been very hard on our people, both our employees and our customers. We laid off half of our staff on March 16th. The remaining employees are on reduced hours, work sharing. Many of our customers are frustrated, and the start of cabin fever is upon them. Our revenue was from three screens. The tasting room is down 25% of normal with curbside deliveries. Wholesale to bar and restaurants is 5% of normal to a few restaurants that do takeout food. And then special events and special customers, including private parties, convention centers, and college athletic events, is zero since March 16th. The National Brewers Association surveyed breweries nationally, and onsite sales are down greater than 70%. And 46% of the craft breweries responded that they would close within one or two months under current conditions. We understand and appreciate the decisions facing us as a county, state, and nation. Thank you for your consideration, your best judgment. We all want to keep our employees, customers, and community safe and get back to work. A partial opening of restaurants, bars, and tasting rooms would be a start, but not a solution to sustainability. We might return to 50% of our former business, and we would expect a lot of shutdowns by mid-August. Necessary and reasonable safety and sanitation protocols will be good for our employees and our customers as we reopen business. Safety and sanitation is very important to our brewery. If we get a bug in our beer, that is really bad for business. We'd probably be out of business. Going forward, washing hands and hand sanitizer dispens stations within our tasting room will be standard. As far as social distancing and facial coverings in a restaurant or a tasting room environment, we see that as a challenge. But our industry, we tend to be pretty creative and innovative. We could look at things like outdoor seating, reservations for specific times. There may be some other issues that we would do to try to get our capacity up. We wouldn't want necessarily people to come into our brewery with gloves on. We don't know if they would be contaminated, so that could be an issue as well. If we need to take temperatures of employees and customers, we can do that, but not without additional staff and additional cost. We want to thank you guys for your consideration. We will do whatever we need to do to try to keep our businesses going. We thank you.
For the, for the board's benefit, there are about six additional speakers, and I would remind all the callers to please keep your comments to two minutes. I understand it might be difficult to hear the buzzer, so we might be chiming in to remind you that your time is up. Thank you.
That was pretty close.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robin Clegg, 3582.
Hi, this is Robin Clegg, and I am a, I'm going to call it a tiny business instead of a small business. I own with my daughter a salon in Alpine called Rustic Roots. And I have a daughter-in-law who owns a small boutique in Alpine also called Bella's Closet. At this salon, we have approximately six hairstylists and one person who does nails. And many consider this an essential need. And we feel that we believe in you and that you should believe in us, that we would be doing things to make it safe, safer for our clients to come in. Staggering schedules so that not all six stylists are there at the same time, that there is a stylist chair empty in between each booth. There are many, many ways for us to transition into getting our, our business back up and running. And when I say our business, the Rustic Roots, they're, they're these seven other women who are mothers, some of them single moms. They have not, and they are self-employed within our salon. They are booth renters. They need, they are either providing, the only provider for their family. Some of them are working late in the day when the husband comes home from work because the families can't afford childcare. It is a challenging situation for these tiny business owners to all of a sudden have no stream of income and have not been able to avail themselves of any unemployment funds, which would traditionally not be theirs. So I sent a 19-point protocol that we would be utilizing for the salon to reopen, and we would really appreciate consideration for what we consider, and many of the population, if you ask them, would consider a salon to be an essential need for haircuts and hair dyeing and pedicures for the elderly and et cetera. So, yes.
I'll ask you to please summarize your comments.
Yes. So I appreciate again all that you all are doing to keep us safe, and please consider trusting enough like we trust in you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sherry Ness, 4723.
Good morning, Board of County Supervisors and Chairman Cox. My name is Sherry Ness, and I'm the owner of Bates Nut Farm. And this pandemic has definitely been difficult for our business. We've had to cancel orders. We've cut back our team to nine from 28, and these are our family and friends. We also had to close our Farmer's Daughter store, and Bates is all about creating experiences, family entertainment through events, classes, birthday parties, weddings, feeding our animals, picnicking, which have all been canceled. All this has made it difficult to pay for inventory, rent, regular expenses, and utilities. We are grateful that we are one of the lucky ones who could stay open. Kudos goes out to the Environmental Health Department, who have done a great job of communicating with business on how we can keep not only our guests who visit, but our employees safe. We've been diligent about wiping down shopping carts as they come in the door, wiping down payment stations, making, marking their floors with social distancing, employees wearing masks, gloves when helping people, and leaving doors open in our store and bathrooms, posting these measures about social distancing and safety protocols. I feel like the communication and education is key, and you guys have done a great job at that. I love the social distancing and sanitation protocol worksheet that was provided. It really made us think about what measures we could take in our business to attack this virus and keep our community safe. The most difficult part of all this has been getting the sanitizers, Clorox wipes, disinfectant masks, and gloves. It would be difficult for businesses to provide masks and gloves and temperature testing for our guests. We've been providing sanitizers and wipes. Please consider the expectations and practical implementation for businesses when we do open, when businesses are able to open. I think that these are great steps in taking, in reopening businesses in our community. From talking to people on the phone, I can tell people just want to know what we're doing to make it safe for them, and they do want to get out. We've had customers coming out to the farm. We really appreciate everything that you guys have been doing and hope that we can get businesses open again soon and that we can do it safely. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Pietra, 3578.
Good morning, county supervisors. My name is Joshua Pietra. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm with you twill. But before I start my comment, I would like to make it known that I'm a part of a group of 10 young people that signed up for comments today. However many of us signed up to give comments on item one, which prior to the finalized agenda referred to the issues of COVID-19. I hope that these hardworking young individuals have the chance to comment. So I use a cross-county employee's support during this health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we had another speaker from SEIU, who was actually part of the organized group presentation, who is now on the line, Rachel Randolph, 7575.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Randolph, and I'm a residential care worker supervisor for Polinsky Children's Center and a proud seven-year county employee. Employees like me at Polinsky Children's Center lack personal protective equipment. We also are concerned about the lack of communication about our exposure to the COVID-19 positive coworkers and children. Employees at Polinsky are frontline workers and face the possibility of being exposed to COVID-19 daily. I urge you to protect all workers and address issues like this, plus provide hazardous pay for being frontline workers. Working with our population of children at Polinsky, we are unable to practice social distancing. I also ask you to support the demand, and more than 1,000 protective workers petition signed, submitted today. Please support and invest in the San Diego recommendation to ensure that all community is healthy and safe during the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Silverwood, 8616.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Jim Silverwood, president and CEO at Affirmed Housing. Affirmed Housing is one of the leading affordable housing developers in San Diego County and the state of California. While Affirmed has been deemed an essential business, and as such, our staff can work remote until the stay-at-home is lifted, our residents in some 43 communities throughout the state do not have that luxury. This includes some 10,000 residents who are not white-collar workers like many of us on this call. Rather, they are blue-collar workers, include many who work in various service industries. At Affirmed, we are now asking our residents who needs food and help. And at several of our properties, 100% of our residents have asked for help. Therefore, we have begun a food program to help them. These lower-income residents have been among the most impacted by the Health Department order and will continue to be so impacted until this board lifts the stay. In addition, I would urge you on a more local note to relax the rules for outside exercise, specifically relax those rules today or later this week for outside activities, including walking on the beach, hiking on trails, surfing, and golf. In closing, I understand that these are tough decisions for the board, and I wish you the best in your future deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Wade, 6671.
Yeah, good morning. This is Ann Wade. Thank you for taking my call. Can y'all hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. First of all, I want to thank our health officials and the county board of supervisors for all that you guys have been tirelessly doing to keep our community safe. I've been watching the briefings, and I really appreciate your efforts on our behalf. Once again, my name is Ann Wade, and I am a self-employed independent contractor and the owner of Wade Into Fitness. I'm going to chime in on what seems like a big theme this morning with regard to health and fitness. I have my background, I have a BA in sociology and a minor in psychology and several national certifications in fitness and yoga, which I've been teaching for about 17 years. And I'm a regular community volunteer in the Fallbrook area. I teach Wade Into Fitness classes at the Fallbrook Community Center, which is a county of San Diego facility, which was obviously closed March 13th, effectively putting me out of business and cutting off my students from the class's health boosting and physical and social benefits. And my biggest concern as a fitness professional is the health and safety of the people I serve in our community. I think our poor county health officials are kind of caught in a catch-22. We know from a litany of research that social isolation can have devastating impacts on a person's psychology and physiology, and that it's tied to very negative outcomes, including renewed, reduced immunological efficiency, which is our first line of defense against disease and perhaps the only one if our healthcare resources are overloaded. And these negative impacts are on everything from obesity, diabetes, mental illness, substance abuse, all of which are comorbidity factors for COVID-19 and reduce the abuse, all of which are comorbidity factors for COVID-19 and reduce the herd health that we all are hoping will give herd immunity. And these negative impacts can happen in a fairly short amount of time. The University of Missouri study showed that in as little as two days of physical inactivity, your body's efficient use of insulin may decrease.
Ann, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. So these impacts can happen really quick. So I would ask that we open public parks and spaces and large facilities like the community center where we can accommodate social distancing, lack of touching, and proper safety guidelines. I think that for our herds and constituencies' health to remain strong to ward off the threat of COVID-19 and for future threats, that we open up the public spaces and business spaces for fitness activities first. And I think it'll help also people increase compliance on the remaining social restrictions and decrease protest and civil unrest. We've got to take care of the public health first, which has been a theme with a lot of the callers, and I believe we can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angel or Angel Cepeda, seven eight eight two.
Hello. My name is Angel Cepeda. As a member of COVID-19 Action Team with Youth Will, I would like to address a comment regarding our community's access to information. In order to minimize the outbreak of COVID-19 in San Diego, I can't emphasize enough the need for paid emergency resource ambassadors positions for the youth. Our youth members are the best advocates to communicate with other youth about existing resources. I'm sure we all have peers that have been affected. After working to improve our youth's access to information, it is unpleasant to hear that healthy and young individuals from our community aren't aware of their condition and the urgency to seek for help. The lack of information has led to my peers not to take critical actions by underestimating their stimulus until it was too late for hospitals to help them out. Although one can't ever be fully safe in the middle of a pandemic, if we can offer access to information to our young community members, it would minimize the number of unnecessary fatalities in San Diego County. To achieve this, we will perform proactive outreach to inform our community about existing food, food resources, share flyers in places that are still being visited, and encourage our young peers to take initiative to become advocates for their community's needs. Aside from research ambassador organizations like San Diego Public, the San Diego Public Health also offers community service opportunities where students of all ages create a group in which they discuss the different needs in the community. Adding young representatives from the different communities in San Diego County would allow us to listen to different voices and perspectives. In this manner, if communities implement research ambassadors, it would allow us to continue having our youth point out the needs necessary to empower San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brittany Holman, four three nine seven.
Good morning. My name is Brittany Holman. I'm with Youth Will. Thanks for listening to us today. I am advocating for more accessibility to free menstrual products at food distribution centers around San Diego during this time. We've noticed that the products that are necessary for low-income students and young women who cannot afford them are just sitting in the schools unused, and it has created a problem during this pandemic. Girls cannot get access to these products. They will resort to using things like socks, toilet paper, or old products, which creates a huge health concern and can lead to things like toxic shock syndrome, urinary tract infections, and even infertility. We need to keep these young women out of the hospitals right now during COVID-19 by giving out these unused products at food distribution centers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sophia Hidari, nine seven nine two.
Good morning. My name is Sophia Hidari, and I'm with Youth Will. Our organization believes that everybody should have safe and sustained housing both during and after the COVID-19 crisis. Youth are being disproportionately impacted by this pandemic, especially as it relates to housing insecurity and homelessness. This is significant because I'm seeing how this pandemic is further disenfranchising many of my peers, many of whom were already struggling with housing insecurity prior to the pandemic, and now they have the added risk of contracting the virus. Many of our youth are on the front lines of this pandemic as essential workers, making them even more susceptible to the virus. Homeless youth, low-income youth, and youth in transitional age shelters are some of the communities that are facing housing insecurity, and it's important that we address these vulnerable communities. And that is why we support housing vacant, that is why we support having vacant areas used to shelter unhoused folks, having the rent and mortgage moratorium held until after the pandemic is over, having rental waivers for transitional-aged youth to avoid seeing a rise in youth homelessness, and food and medical-grade masks being made available to youth who are unhoused. We ask that the County Board of Supervisors take these demands into consideration moving forward on this issue so that our youth are not falling through the cracks amidst this pandemic, and thank you for your leadership during this crisis.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Haley Rico, seven one five zero.
Hey, everyone. My name is Haley Rico, resident of District Four, and I am with Youth Will. I believe during these crucial times, resources specifically like menstrual products are unappainable for many women and young girls. In 2017, a bill in California was passed making it so schools can offer free menstrual products to their students. But due to the COVID-19 pandemic, schools were closed and jobs were lost, making not only menstrual products unavailable, but also unaffordable. In result, our women and young girls resort to things like rags, toilet paper, socks, and newspapers, which can cause reproductive issues, urinary tract infections, and even toxic shock syndrome. Pads and tampons from the schools should be put to use instead of hanging on shelves and made accessible during this time by being distributed at food distribution sites, local high schools, and junior highs. Period poverty has always been an issue in many communities, and action should be taken immediately to ensure our young women are healthy during these times. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Tamposchel, one zero zero five.
Hello?
Hi there. You have two minutes to address the board. Please restate your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Tamposchel, and I am with Youth Will. I believe that nobody should go hungry. This existing issue has only been exacerbated by the COVID-19 crisis. I have been a volunteer for an after-school program at Ibarra Elementary for the last two years. Before Ibarra was made a food distribution site, families of students who attended Ibarra were walking at least three miles to the food distribution site at Monroe Clark Middle. This is an undue burden, especially for younger children, because the recipient of food must be at the site themselves. Many schools are yet to service food distribution sites. Furthermore, there are thousands of transitional-age youth who are excluded from the current system. Therefore, I ask that the County of San Diego support extending hours at food distribution sites and initiate proactive multi-platform, multilingual outreach about location, hours, and additional options for securing food and food benefits. Thank you for all that you have done. Have a good day. Bye.
Thank you. Next, we're going to turn to some people who have called into the meeting whose numbers we have not been able to identify. So I'll call the last four digits, and then if you can please state your name and confirm that you wish to speak on item number two. So we'll start with one five three five. You'll have two minutes to address the board. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Good morning, folks. My name is Monet Panza. I'm calling with Youth Will today. I believe that young folks should have access to economic opportunities at all times, and right now during this pandemic, youth are not being provided with resources to gain those opportunities. However, youth are ready to provide resources to their communities. And so, we would like to propose a youth emergency resource ambassadors committee, which would be dedicated to having youth in their communities provide resources to other youth, and also it would provide economic opportunities in their communities for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is last four digits, two eight nine five. Please state your first and last name, and you'll have two minutes to address the board.
First and foremost, thank you, Board of Supervisors. My name is Carlos Torres, and I'm with Youth Will and a resident of District Four. I believe that youth in low-income communities are being impacted the most amidst the COVID-19 pandemic due to the loss of jobs and stay-at-home act. Youth are unable to access the resources they need. They need to be informed and assisted with beneficial programs like unemployment because for many youth, it ensures groceries, water, and other basic necessities that their family need. So we propose there be a team of emergency resource ambassadors in decent communities to make sure our youth are being informed as much possible and being supported in every way possible to ensure that our youth have the basic necessities to maintain stability in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is five seven one five. Please state your full name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Watson Arten, and I am with Youth Will. We are also part of the Infatuation in San Diego Families Coalition, and we are supporting all the assets that they put forward. I believe that youth boys should be encouraged and incorporated in the discussion around COVID-19 and in decision-making as well. Due to language barrier and misinformation, our community doesn't know where to turn to get proper resources and information. As someone who grew up translating for my parents, it is transparent that a lot of our communities are struggling due to language barriers. This is why we are asking the county to create paid emergency resource ambassador positions for youth to communicate with other youth and their communities about existing resources. This will allow our region to take proactive outreach, to inform the community about existing resources by advertising about existing resources in different languages and putting flyers in places that are frequently visited, such as grocery stores, launder mats, gas stations, hospitals, and so on. And taking care of our community as a whole means that everyone in our community is informed and knows about existing resources. This is why we're asking the county to pay emergency resource ambassadors, because not only are youth connected to other youth, but like I mentioned, a lot of us are like point person for our families, and our families rely on us because we are the only person or the oldest person in our family who speaks English and can read English. This is why it's important that we incorporate youth and young people in decision-making and the discussion around COVID-19. We appreciate all your hard work, and thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Our next caller is eight two zero three. Please state your full name.
Hello. My name is Benjamin Grove. I live in La Mesa, and I'm from the Youth Action Board. Governor Gavin Newsom announced $42 million to protect foster youth and families impacted by COVID-19. Only 6.9 million of these dollars is dedicated to extra support for social workers in need, and it is likely that only a small portion of this is going to social workers in San Diego. This money is not for additional social workers to be hired, but instead for social workers to work overtime. And money for this overtime is to be spent focused on foster family caregivers at higher risk for COVID-19 and not specifically focused on foster youth. According to the findings of the 2018-2019 San Diego County grand jury, a major systemic issue in child welfare services is lax system support and training for burned-out and overwhelmed staff and social workers. Workers are burned out for two big reasons: case overload and lack of support for second-hand trauma. A drop-in center staff member told me that social workers didn't have the time or resources to take many of the reports of abuse they made seriously, including reports made on behalf of youth who were homeless and did not have fixed addresses, youth who were 17 and would soon age out of the system if they became part of it. Adding overtime hours to already overburdened staff does not fix the problem. I ask the Board of Supervisors, will emergency funding be requested for necessary training and support for all social workers and the hiring of additional social workers to take on cases? There's also not enough qualified and properly vetted foster families. The grand jury found that almost one-third of children from some group homes were sexually abused, drugged, and were trafficked out in their foster homes. And in addition, 20% of all hotline calls were from foster youth, with the majority of complaints from the foster children involving physical abuse and/or neglect. Foster and resource families are receiving $4.7 million of this grant for financial support. I ask the Board of Supervisors, how will it be ensured that these families are using these funds in order to better support the foster child and make sure they are safe? And finally, youth who are being abused previously found in escape from their torment by going to school. Now that schools are closed, youth living with their abusers are experiencing increased instances and severity of abuse. Even though children, child abuse cases have likely spiked, reports are down in numbers because the majority of people who report abuse are teachers and school staff. I ask the Board of Supervisors, how will you address the spike in child abuse cases when youth are being isolated from their community? Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you. Our next caller is two eight two two. Please state your full name for the record. Two eight two two. Would you like to address the board on item number two? We will move on to the next caller, three four eight four.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, San Diego Board of Supervisors.
I think we may have lost you. Is three eight, three four eight four on the call?
Hi, this is Adrian.
Hi there. You can state your full name for the record.
Hi. Well, good morning. My name is Adrian Sisnero Seligman. I'm a member of the Southern California Golf Association and an active member of St. Mark's Women's Golf Club in the beautiful Lake San Marcos. I would like to speak on health protocol and social distancing and opening for business of North County golf courses and all San Diego golf courses. I would like to read a couple of updates from the Southern California Golf Association as of last Sunday, April 19th. For the opening in Governor Newsom's roadmap to modify the stay-at-home order that we suggested last week, Placer County's 27 golf courses in Northern California opened up for play Friday for a set of social distancing best practices supplied at the county's request. Preparation for opening in Southern California counties is rumored to be taking place eternally, specifically Los Angeles County Public Health Director Barbara Farrar is quoted in Saturday's Los Angeles Times discussing recreational trails and beaches as having reopening strategies in place, quote, "as we begin to lift our health officer order safer at home later on in the month, in the month of May, in most likelihood." The most significant pivot in the direction was announced Saturday evening in the Ventura County press release quoted verbatim from that release. The modified order allowed exceptions for limited business operations, allowing non-public service businesses to operate using no more than 10 employees, allowing for gatherings of up to five people, modifies some essential businesses, allows for gathering in motor vehicles, reopens golf courses, and other forms of recreation with appropriate restrictions, allows bike shops to open, and permits in-person sale of vehicles. Order issued by the Ventura County Health Officer. At this time, I'd like to announce a plan for the COVID-19 health protocol and social distancing for the opening of golf courses. Yes?
I would like you to please wrap up your comments. Your time is up.
Oh, I apologize. I would like to submit a three-phase plan to Supervisor Jim Desmond and to all the supervisors in San Diego for your consideration. Thank you very much for your time. Blessings to everybody.
Thank you. Our next caller is last four digits, zero zero one five. Please state your full name for the record. Zero zero one five? How about three one two zero? Three one two.
Hi. Yes, this is, good morning, Chairman Cox and the County Board of Supervisors. I thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Jim McDonough. I'm the general manager of the Santa Luis Club, a private club in North County, San Diego. I represent the 365 Santa Luis golf members, as well as the other San Diego clubs, including the Bridges, the Farms, the Crosby, Rancho Santa Fe Golf Course. We, as a group, are requesting that the Board of Supervisors work with other governmental agencies to accelerate the pace to release and/or modify the current restrictions on golf. We have all heard and realized the benefits of recreation and physical exercise in an outdoor environment. As previously heard from Tim, Eric, Frank, John, Adrian, golf clubs and courses are able to take the appropriate steps to ensure safe and best practices are in place to significantly minimize any potential viral spread. These practices have already been stated. I won't continue to repeat them, but they are in place and are ready to go. I won't continue to repeat them, but they are in place and are ready to go. We would like to point out that other states and counties, particularly in California, both Placer, Orange County, Ventura, and Riverside County, to name a few, have recently opened up golf for restricted play. We are asking the county supervisors, San Diego City, and the county health department consider golf under these restricted conditions and allow for an immediate opening. We thank you for your ongoing service and commitment to our community and appreciate all that you are doing through this difficult time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also received a request to speak on item number one from Ahiri Complito, 0563. Did you actually want to speak to item number two, the COVID update? Yes.
Yes, okay. Scott White. This is on item number two. And I'll just echo what the golf people have said. I'm a member of El Camino Country Club in Oceanside, managed by the American Golf Association, which runs a number of courses in San Diego. I furnished the protocol to Supervisor Desmond and his staff. So it's almost identical to what has already been mentioned, but it's...I had to go up to El Segundo to get the Vice President of American Golf to provide it to me, Michael DeJordi, because no one else is working at the course. So we need to get business back together. People look at golf as recreation, but it's businesses that need to get going and get the recreation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have, again, last call for speaker with last four digits, 2822. 2822, if you would like to address the board on item two, the COVID update. If you could please state your name for the record. You'll have two minutes. If not, that concludes public testimony on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I would note for the record that for item 19, an errata has been posted online and distributed to the board. There were minor revisions necessary to reflect the most recent numbers related to the TEATER Plan as of April 17th. The previous numbers included in the board letter reflected a status as of April 14th and have been updated with numbers as of April 17th in the recommendation and board letter content supporting areas.
Very good. I want to thank all the speakers that we've had this morning, very thoughtful, and I know we all want to get this whole issue behind us as quickly as we can. I know there was a number of questions that were raised on some of the speakers, and I first want to give an opportunity to our Chief Administrative Officer to go ahead and respond to some of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all the speakers. I was taking copious notes. Many of you raised some very valid points, and we will take those back to incident command and see what we can do with most of them. Let me first address the group presentation. I do want to thank David Garcia and the employees who took the time to speak today. Please let me reassure you how safety is our number one importance, of number one importance for our employees, and we have worked diligently to make sure that all employees have the protective equipment that they need as they go about doing their work. Let me give you just some statistics of what employees have received so that you can rest assured that they are getting plenty of protective gear. We have issued 17,532 bandanas, 91,350 gloves, 199 cases of Clorox wipes, 21,204 antiseptic wipes, over 651 gallons of sanitizer, 12,418 N95s, an additional 6,400 facial masks, an additional 200 face shields, 360 goggles, 1,406 gowns. The priorities of the N95s, of course, went to our first responders and those who are dealing directly with COVID, potential COVID-positive patients. So we have been working diligently to make sure that all those supplies are on order, have been received, have been distributed, and we continue to keep supplies on orders and distributing those through each of our departments. Let me also, I believe there was a question about notifications. We are required, all businesses actually are required, to notify any employee who has come in contact with anyone that has tested positive for COVID-19. So rest assured, all employees, if you have been in contact with anyone with a COVID-19 patient, you have received a letter to let you know that. Let me also talk about the fact that I do understand this is an anxious time for all of you. It is a challenging time for everyone, and you are on the front lines in some cases and others that may not be on the direct front lines. You are still working diligently in visitations and out dealing with the public, and I just want to personally give you my gratitude and appreciation for everything that you are doing. I also want to let you know that we have not furloughed or laid off any employees in spite of the financial crisis that we face. We are focusing all of our actions to try to keep all county jobs secure. It's important that you understand, though, that this is very challenging, especially when you consider all of the other speakers that you heard today and what's happening in our communities. We're trying to balance struggling families who have lost their jobs and need help from the county, as well as our business owners who also have been forced to shut down and face a real possibility that may never be able to open their doors again. You've heard from some of those today. So it is a very critical time for all of us, and we are diligently working to balance all those needs, and we'll be doing that also as we build our budget going forward. I also want to remind employees that we are all disaster workers. There's Government Code Section 3100 and 3101 that declares all county workers as disaster workers. And those of you that work in the psych hospital and Edmore, you already receive a premium because we know how important your jobs are and that you're at a higher level of risk. So there are premiums associated just with those classifications. Similar salary structures and premiums have been folded into hourly wages in our sheriff in our jails. So we do take all of that into consideration. So even though I understand your request for hazard pay, that is another consideration that we all have to consider as we're making these very, very difficult decisions. Let me move on and address just a moment with the ISDF speakers. There were several of you, also some of you that were advocating on behalf of youth and some of the behavioral health, mental health issues that you're facing. That's also really critical to us. We think about that frequently. We know that those needs are going to increase as we go forward based on COVID-19 and the ramifications and the long-term impacts those will have. And we certainly are going to be factoring those needs into our budget projections as we move forward. And again, we have to balance that with the decrease in revenue. So we're working diligently with our federal and state delegations to try to get as much relief as we can to help us as we move forward in building our budget. And then lastly, let me address those speakers, and there were several of you who spoke about your businesses, golf courses, hair salons. I believe there was a digital printing caps and whatnot. I really appreciate you taking the time today to address us. I have been getting hundreds of emails along those lines, and believe me, every one of those are heart-wrenching, and we do understand what you are going through, and we are working diligently with our business community and our public health officials to identify a safe framework that we can implement over the next several months to get you all back into business again and employed and your businesses thriving. It is a day-by-day situation as we look at cases and we look at testing and the various critical things that we have to consider when we make those decisions. I am really excited, as I mentioned earlier, that we are looking seriously at how we get activity out there open in terms of more activity in our parks and our beaches. We're looking at some of those regulations for allowing golf courses to reopen. I have seen many really, really good plans from several golf clubs that make me feel assured that you're taking this very seriously and that you would understand how to do it safely. So it's important that we continue our work with those businesses so that we can feel comfortable that we can open safely and get you all going again. So, Mr. Chairman, I believe that addresses the questions that I jotted down. If I missed anything, please feel free to ask me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Helen, for your comments. And again, we've heard from a lot of speakers this morning, and believe me, I sympathize with all of them. We want to get this economy back as quickly as we can. We want to be able to lift the restrictions as quickly as we can. I think the presentation by Dr. Wooton, I think, is very encouraging. We asked the citizens of San Diego County to give us a month of April to see if we can turn this thing around. And I think, at least from the statistics we've seen, it looks like the peak of the virus in San Diego County was on April 14th, and we need to focus on about two weeks after that to make sure we get beyond it. Doesn't mean we couldn't have another spike, but I'm really encouraged with the response of the citizens of San Diego County to the stay-at-home orders, to the social distancing, to the wearing of facial coverings if you're going out. And I think we're in a good position to really look at the reopening of a lot of the recreational facilities, maybe even some of those before the end of this month. And certainly, I know the business community has been very patient, and there's been a lot of people that have suffered loss of jobs, furloughing, that we want to see back to work as quickly as we can. And I think that time is coming very, very quickly. I do know that we have some speakers that wanted, or some supervisors rather, that wanted to speak, and I'll first call on Supervisor Fletcher.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all the speakers who participated in today's meeting. I just want us to continue to keep in mind that as we move forward, it really is important that we do it in a cautious and thoughtful way. The experience of Singapore is a roadmap of what can happen as you begin to lose focus and you see a tremendous spike in cases. That's a present-day experience of what can happen. The experience of 1918 is a really cautionary tale that we are not a patient people, and that is true. And there's a lot about that that really makes us great and industrious and innovative and forward-moving. But in 1918, almost every jurisdiction had a second wave, many of them much greater than the first wave, and they had to reimpose. They came out too soon, and they had to reimpose a lot of the restrictions. And I think that the most important thing for our economy is to make sure that as we come out of this, that we do it right, that we do it responsibly, that we do it in the right order with the right precautions put in place, that we continue to meet both the federal government's guidance, which is continued downward trajectory, which, again, it is also important for us to note that there is going to be a lag time between a change in people's behavior and when you see positive cases. And so as the public is either restrictions get lifted or people lose their focus, that is going to happen, and then it is going to take a number of days before we see that begin to manifest itself in positive cases because the spread has to happen. People have to get sick. They have to get sick enough to many times go to the hospital in order to get a test because we are not testing everyone who's symptomatic, nor doing widespread testing of asymptomatic folks. And so our awareness of changes will be a little bit delayed. And then, of course, hospitalizations is a lagging indicator of positives and loss of life is a lagging indicator of both. And so I think as we go forward, we want to get our economy up and running again, and we want to get things back moving again. But I think we have to continue to make sure that we do it in the most responsible way so that we don't have to have a herky-jerky, we take a step forward and then we have to take a step back. As it relates to the outdoor activities, I think that there are a number of outdoor activities, parks, beaches, things that we can open up that have very little danger to the spread of the virus or public health. I think that folks can physically distance, household units can stay together, and I think that those outdoor activities are really key and essential to maintaining a good state of health. And so I know that we're working with the coastal mayors to be in a position where we can perhaps begin a phased-in approach to the beaches to get folks back in the water in a safe, responsible way. I believe we can accomplish that, and I believe that we can move forward with local jurisdictions on changing the posture around parks, again, in a responsible way, in a way that is mindful to balance between the impacts of COVID and then the impacts of the measures we take to confront the challenge of COVID. And so I think as we move thoughtfully through that, we can provide more opportunities for folks to get outdoor. But again, just a word of caution on some of the other broader efforts and steps. Tony Fauci came out yesterday, I believe, and said he was worried that states that are moving too quickly, it will backfire. And so I think we have to be mindful of that with the other things. Final point that I want to make, two final points. One is I do think coronavirus is exposing a lot of inequities in our society, both in terms of access to healthcare, access to testing. A Harvard study came out that showed you're 15% more likely to die of COVID if you live in an environmental justice community that's been negatively impacted by air pollution. And I think that as we move forward, we need to continue to strive to address a lot of those inequities where you see disproportionate impacts of this on our society. And I think that's a thing. And then my final message is just to our county workers. I know that this is a very difficult time. Every day you get up and you do incredible work on the part of the public of San Diego, and as we've gone through this crisis, you've stepped up to do heroic work. And I see you. Sometimes I actually see you, the public health nurses I saw at our drive-through testing center that are out actively engaged with folks who are COVID-positive, taking those tests and getting those swabs and getting those samples. Our county staff that are with our homeless outreach teams that are out there every day, those have been reassigned to the convention center, those who are on the front lines of what we're doing, whether you're in our psych hospital or you're one of our service providers, or you're taking care of foster kids or handling adoptions, or just the county workers who continue to perform each and every essential service. And I see you and I appreciate you, and I want you to know that your sacrifice and the risk that you are enduring in order to continue to make sure our county government functions is not lost on me and is something that is very important, I know, to the county leadership, and I believe the whole board. And so I hear you on the calls for PPE, and we are fighting to get as much as we possibly can. There is a global shortage of PPE. We have hospital systems that are running critically low, and so we are fighting to get everyone the very best they can. And then my final point is I do believe that hazard pay is appropriate for frontline workers, particularly public health workers who are engaging with individuals who are positive or symptomatic or at risk of being positive. I think that is appropriate. I think something for our workers who continue to engage with the public regularly, whether that be our first responders or others, you are in, during an increased risk, and just those who continue to come to work and are exposed to your coworkers. And so I will continue to monitor the progress of those talks, and if needed, I'm happy to bring something before this board in the future to make sure that the risk that you take is responsibly recognized and rewarded. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that is the end of my comments. Thank you.
Supervisor, I believe Supervisor Desmond wanted to speak.
Thank you, Chair Cox. And first of all, I want to thank all the speakers, both the public speakers and the employees today. You know, a lot of passionate comments were made and, you know, ring true in many different ways. But I also want to thank our public health officials, the task force, and the staff for doing a remarkable job of both communicating, educating, and keeping the residents of San Diego County safe. It's been phenomenal. The sacrifices that the public has made have been extensive, and I think there's been a commendable willingness for them to do what is necessary, to leave school, to leave work, leave their businesses, and leave behind the world as we knew it. But now, today, we're at a crossroads, and we must decide what the best course is for the entire population. And at this, at these crossroads, we see despair and economic devastation from the virus. Many of the speakers today, you know, wanted and are asking for additional services, additional equipment, additional housing, and additional funds, while income to both the public and private sectors is dwindling because of the economy. So we've learned a lot from our health officials. We learned from them the tools to fight the virus, washing our hands for 20 seconds. That worked. Social distancing, masks, and gloves, all of these, all of these tools worked, and the trends are coming down. So how do we keep these tools, keep using these tools and apply them not only to continuing fighting the virus, which we need to do, but also towards reviving the economy and opening businesses so we have the resources to address many of the needs that were brought up today? Right now, the open businesses are all deemed essential, and those that aren't are nonessential. And I think to help the economy and businesses... And I think to help the economy and businesses, we need to change the narratives from what is essential to what is safe. What is the safest path, applying those same tools that, for the most part, staved off a virus, and using those tools, those same tools, to open businesses in San Diego County? Jobs are essential, food on the table is essential, and our economy is essential. Businesses are hurting out there, and I've talked with many of them over the past few weeks, are just barely hanging on. Many of our residents have been laid off and are scared. So, we need to move beyond, I think, this essential phase and move towards the safe phase in business and business practices. The new normal is using those same tools that held off the virus and using them to open the economy. Last week, my office, we launched a website, sandiegobacktowork.com, and we asked business owners and industry leaders to devise plans that would keep both them and their employees and their customers safe in order to get opened back up. In less than a week, we received over 275 different plans and pledges from business owners who are willing to take the extra precautions to get back to work quickly, efficiently, and safely. So, I'm going to make all of those responses, you know, apart from the business owners throughout San Diego County, part of the official public record today. And I just want to take, I have a short little video, it's only a couple of minutes. I want to take, so that you can hear some of the businesses, some of the ones that didn't call in today, that are currently closed and what they're willing to do, and after that, I'll conclude my remarks with a motion. I don't know if you can cue the video.
I'm the owner of Big Frog Custom T-shirts and More here in San Marcos.
My name is Joy Thompson, and I have been a massage therapist in North County for 20 years.
Our family owns LaVons Landscaping. We're a commercial landscape company, services all of San Diego County.
My name's Curtis Anderson. My wife and I own Salon Drive in C and T and Fletcher Hills. I also own a mobile detailing business, Thought to Your Detail.
I'm Donna Calas, and I'm the owner of Oceanside Adventures.
My name is Louis Yurdel, and I own Bachel Flex Gym in Oceanside, California.
Hi, my name is Brian Janey with Allegro Piano Service in Fallbrook, California.
My name is Chris George from Team Kia and Team Ozdale Cohone. I operate the dealerships here in El Cajon, and it seems to me that our concern, and the concern of many, is public health, the obvious. And we are asking what it looks like to preserve public health and to reintroduce commerce.
I want to get our business out of the closet and back on the road.
We want to be able to operate in a safe manner, not only for our guests, but for our employees.
While these are difficult times and health officials are making challenging decisions, businesses are hurting.
We know that life won't be the same for a while, but in the meantime, our business is willing to adapt.
By wearing masks, having social distancing policies, frequent hand washing, glove use, and constant cleaning of surfaces, we'll be able to keep our employees and customers safe and continue our business.
My business is willing to adapt by having both clients and therapists wear masks, by taking temperatures at each and every appointment, and by booking appointments farther apart in order to give extra time to disinfecting.
Plexiglass in between every touch point or at least six feet of distance, and designating a health officer to not only educate, but to police, if you will, so we can police internally.
Our members-only business environment lends itself to social distancing by eliminating contact with large groups of people of unknown origin. We are further committed to practicing increased sanitation and disinfecting procedures, limiting our glass sizes, and doing symptom and temperature checks for all persons entering our facility.
We will follow whatever protocol is put by the health department, but we feel that this virus can't define who we are and that we have to save livelihood and get back to work.
We will be able to keep clients and therapists healthy and continue business. Together, we can get back to work, San Diego.
Together, we can get back to work, San Diego.
Because together, we can get San Diego working together again.
Together, we can get back to work, San Diego.
Together, we can get San Diego back to work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, you know, your patience with the video there. I'm not, you know, many of these businesses that we've been in contact with, and many of them don't know how much longer they can really hold out. And I'm not asking for health guidelines to be changed. I really appreciate the health officer's professionalism. I only am asking for the opportunity for more businesses to operate under these same guidelines. I'd like to act, I'd like to direct staff to begin preparing reopening criteria, not only for the beaches, parks, and golf courses, but to open gyms, hair salons, restaurants, and large warehouse stores on May 1st. I understand there'll be some pushback, and only the governor can make these decisions on the nonessential businesses. And I heard, though, during this virus and during other efforts from our county council and from the task force, you know, when the gun stores should remain closed. The governor's office received enough input to delegate that authority to the local sheriffs. So, there is precedence for change. But we have to be a voice. We have to have be the input to open its businesses, safe businesses, safely on May 1st. These very nonessential businesses are the ones that saved our bacon during this crisis by providing and making masks and face shields and hand sanitizer and other personal protection equipment. You didn't bat an eye then when those nonessential businesses were providing that effort. So, we have business plans, we're willing, businesses have plans, they're willing to operate safely, and our message should be one of opening parks, beaches, and golf courses, along with the opening of the gyms, restaurants, salons, and salons on May 1st. So, I've kind of parsed this down into a motion here. On item two of the three recommendations, one is to take other, take any action necessary to address the COVID-19 pandemic emergency response. I'd like to add three measures under that. Number one is opening safe outdoor recreational activities as soon as possible. Number two, to start now developing reopening criteria for the businesses, gym, hair salons, restaurants, and large warehouse stores. And number three, to start lobbying efforts for the phasing in of businesses in San Diego County to begin on May 1st. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you Supervisor Desmond. We have a motion made by the supervisor. Oops, let me get my video back on. All right. Thank you Supervisor Desmond for your comments. We do have a motion. I would request your indulgence in taking action on item number two and 19 together, and then, if you would like to make some additional amendments to that or additional direction, I think that might be a better way to proceed. Would that be agreeable to you?
I'm not quite clear where you're going. I guess I'll keep the motion on the floor, and if you've got some other...
Okay, let's see if we get a, let's see if we get a second.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, this is the county council. One thing I just need to make sure that we are all clear, while the board can express its concern, and the board can express what it would like to say, the decision of whether or not we're going to open these businesses would lie with the governor, as we know, but also with the public health officer, and your board would not be able to direct the public health officer to take any action as far as that is concerned. It is within the public health officer's discretion. So, I just need to make sure that the board understands where it has authority here and where it does not have authority.
And I'm fine with that and understand those parameters, but if we continue this downward trend during the month of April, I would like, and that seems to be what we're looking at, I want to be ready, May 1st, if we can get concurrence from the governor, to get these businesses open.
I don't know how we get attention to speak in this process.
Go ahead Supervisor Jacob.
I did, I did. No, thank you. I appreciate Supervisor Desmond, what his intent here is, and I could probably second it. If we don't have a timeline on it, I think that we, let me back up and make a few comments about some of my concerns, and a thank you to all those that took time to speak today, and going back, seemed like a long time ago that we had the report from our staff, which was a very good, good report. What I see we're dealing with is a health crisis on the back of an economic crisis, and until we solve the health crisis, we're not going to solve the economic crisis. So, we're dealing with something that is very difficult, and at the same time, we're dealing with a social crisis also, and an emotional crisis with our public. So, it's a real balancing act, the way I see it, in how we move forward, and I think we have to be very careful in how we move forward. I think we're all anxious to open up our recreational facilities and our golf courses if we have the proper protocols and rules in place. I think we've seen demonstrated by the people that people can follow the rules, and we're seeing that in the numbers, and we're seeing that in the decline. But we also have to respect what came out of the administration, the criteria that Dr. Wooton went through, and also from our governor, which is what we need to live under. We do have some flexibility under that. Any decision that is made must be based on facts, not a motion based on facts. And a lot of businesses are suffering, and I'm as anxious as anybody else to get things going. The fact of the matter is that unless people feel safe, they are not going to go to restaurants. They're not going to go to businesses to do business as usual unless people feel safe. In order for people to feel safe and want to go into these businesses, regardless of what kind of business it is, the business needs to establish certain protocols. I was particularly impressed with the people that spoke from the golf industry, that they've submitted a plan, they've submitted some protocols that would work, and other businesses, I think, in our region could do the very same thing, is provide us some protocols that our health officer could take a look at, that hopefully could end up in a health order. You know, if that, Jim, if that's your intent to get staff to start working on this, I would support that, to give an absolute deadline as to when we're going to open. Again, I think that's premature, because that's going to depend, again, on the facts that the deadline, as far as health goes. Having said that, let me lay out some of my concerns. First of all, I'm very concerned about testing and our capacity, and to be able to test all of those that need to be tested and want to be tested. I'm concerned about hospital capacity. I think we must remember, we have not opened up elective surgeries. We have a lot of people out there that are in pain, that are hurting, that need elective surgeries, and they're not able to get those right now. So, what happens to our hospital capacity when the hospitals, and there's a health order to open up elective surgeries, and if we have a surge with COVID? Right now, the trend line's down. We're not anywhere near capacity with most of our hospitals. So, that's another concern I have. I'm concerned about our healthcare workers and the personal protective equipment. We don't have enough of that. I am concerned, as I mentioned earlier, about our economy, that I don't believe we're going to solve the economic crisis, as I said earlier, without solving the health crisis. I'm concerned about the financial impact on the county and on county services and the budget that we're going to be dealing with, which is very different than budget decisions that we've been able to make in the past. This is going to be very tough. I'm concerned about the border issues and the virus coming across our southern border, and what has been stated that we are impact in the South County, particularly with our healthcare system and the hospital systems. And I'm concerned about getting a handle on the virus and the border situation, the southern border. I'm also concerned about the social and emotional well-being of the people in this region. I believe we're almost at a breaking point, that people, they want to get out, they want to exercise, they want to do some things, and they see that maybe we just need to put a little common sense into implementing the health orders. I've heard some stories, you've heard them too, that are pretty outrageous in terms of threatening with the citation and the enforcement of the health order. It's like enforcing any other law. There needs to be some common sense put into it, and I think ultimately, some personal responsibility. I think we're at a point that people are aware of this virus, they're aware of the dangers, they're aware of how it's spread. What we don't know is who is spreading it yet. So, we know, we know how to be safe in the community. So, I think we can rely on the people in this region to assume more personal responsibility for not stopping, for stopping the spread of this virus. There was a statement made, I think Robin Clegg made it some time ago, "Trust in us as we trust in you." I mean, that's a good bumper sticker. It is trust, but it's also, the trust has to be based on facts. So, my feeling at this time, those are my concerns, and I've heard from a lot of other people, that's what they're concerned of too. But I also think that there are risks in life. There are risks in everything that we do, and we know the most vulnerable population, people over the age of 65. And so, people over the age of 65 must take more precaution, but younger people need to make sure they're not spreading the virus around to others also. And I think that plays into the personal responsibility aspects. So, common sense, personal responsibility, having a little more trust, but again, any decisions that are made must be based on fact. So, having said that, I don't mind a direction to staff to take a look at how we open up our recreational facilities, including our golf courses, slowly opening up certain businesses as long as there are protocols in place that create a safe environment, and trying to move forward with those plans as soon as possible. Problem is, I don't know when that is. The administration laid out the criteria, the GATE criteria, as it's called, and we met two. I remember, the report we had was so long ago, but I think there were at least a couple of criteria that has already been met on that, but we need to meet all five before we can really move forward. So, that would be my position at this time, and if there's a way to deal with this all in one package and one motion, I would support that. If not, if you want to take them separately, I would move the CAO recommendation on item two and 19, and then, we can talk about, I think, what Supervisor Desmond's intent was on a separate motion. Your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. We do have a request, I think, from Supervisor Gaspar for a comment.
I was just happy to second the motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, that was Supervisor Desmond's motion?
That's correct.
Let me just make a couple of comments and then maybe ask Supervisor Desmond to restate what he wants to do. We have a motion to accept the report on item two, and I'm not sure Supervisor Desmond, did that include item 19? Supervisor Desmond, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. I just have to hit this unmute button. The, yes, that would include receiving the report from item 19 and the recommendations for item 19 as well. So, I would, and if you want me to restate the motion?
Well, just maybe if I could make a couple of comments, and then I would ask you to do that. As the county council has indicated, we are really in regards to what is an essential business. we are really in regards to what is an essential business and what is not, is not anything that's under our control. It's under the control of the Governor and the state of California. We do have a number of public health directives that have been put out by our public health officer. And those directives will expire on, on April 30th. Now, that doesn't mean, some of them could be continued or could be modified. But I really do think we are on the verge, particularly in some of the recreational of, of seeing some modifications to that directive, perhaps even before the end of this, this month. We understand the frustration everybody has, the pent-up energy, they've been staying at home for the most part, and I think taking this issue very seriously, as they should. And I know the, the subcommittee, the CIO, and, and the public health professionals are reviewing right now what might be able to be done, even in a more immediate timeframe, to see if we can't make some modifications, particularly as it regards to allowing people to get out and about, as long as they keep that social distance, and as long as they have facial coverings for a lot of activities. So what I would like to suggest is that, I, I think, you know, your intent is good. I, I certainly don't disagree with that. I mean, opening up safe opportunities for people to get out and recreate, I, I'm all in favor of that, but I think there's going to be some constraints on that. Reopening businesses, we are certainly looking forward to when that's going to happen. But again, a lot of that's going to be dictated by the, the governor's public health directives. There has been a committee that's been put together by myself and Mayor Faulkner, having representation from a broad cross-section of businesses and industries throughout this, this region, including representation from the North County Chamber, the North County EDC, the East County EDC, South County EDC. There's about 29 people, I think, now that are representing different associations, for instance, like the, the Restaurant Association, to put together some plans that will allow us to restart business, probably a little bit different than the, than what we've been dealing with before, but in a responsible way so that we don't have a future spike in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. So what I would like you to do is to maybe, if you could, restate your three additional tag-ons to item number three. And again, as Supervisor Jacob said, I, I think, you know, and county council has indicated, I don't think we can put a specific timeframe on, other than just as quickly as we can. I think that would certainly allow me probably to support the, the amendment that you were suggesting, and we could then take action on it. So Supervisor Desmond, could you restate those, those three points?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your comments and all the supervisors' comments on this. And I'm fully aware that we, it, it's, it's a parallel path. It's not just start opening the businesses and forget, you know, fighting the virus. It's, I, we can use those same tools for both, is what I'm, is what I'm really proposing. So the first one, and again, this would be through, you know, developing the criteria to opening safe outdoor recreational activities as soon as possible. And, and under criteria that put forth that, that, you know, some of them, you know, I've got 273, 5 comments and different plans from different, or, you know, golf courses and places like that. So I don't want to just open them up and say go willy-nilly, but there's, there needs to be. So I would like to see opening of safe outdoor recreational activities ASAP, as soon as possible. So safe is, you know, be up to staff and our, and our health professionals. Number two, to start developing reopening criteria now. I don't want to, I don't want to wait for another task force. I don't want to, I mean, we should have been, quite frankly, doing this a few weeks ago. I, you know, and I know there's, there's, you, you are in the, in the mayor, and I respect, you know, you're opening up a, a task force to try to develop that criteria as well. But I think we could start now on a few businesses. So start developing reopening criteria that could be ready by May 1st. And then number three, to lobby, to have lobbying efforts to the government's, to the governor's office for a phased business opening for May 1st. So those aren't deadlines for opening the businesses essentially, or saying we're going to open businesses on May 1st. It's developing criteria so we're ready for May 1st in item two, and lobbying the governor's office for an earlier opening on these, on businesses in San Diego County, and, and pushing that effort for the 1st of May. And I realize the, the decision for that opening is not up to us, it's up to the health professionals and the governor's office.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to reiterate a point Supervisor Jacob made, that I, I don't think, we have, we have a motion in a second. I think we have to take a vote on it. But I, I don't think it is wise of us to lobby the state on an artificial date that these things need to happen. I think that we need to be, continue to be guided by the daily totals that come in. We've got a federal parameter outlined. I think the states can outline a parameter. I think those are individual day-by-day tracking of, of cases of hospitalizations, of percentage positives. Those are the things that are going to guide when it is most appropriate to open these things on an arbitrary date. And so I, I won't be supportive of the motion.
Supervisor Jacob?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Desmond changed the motion to say as soon as possible, not a date. I could support the motion. Otherwise, I'm not going to support the motion. And the reason is, I stated earlier, I firmly believe any decision that is made needs to be based on facts, not politics, not emotion, based on facts. And I think, as I said earlier, I think it's perfectly with our purview to direct our staff to start working on the protocols to reopen recreational facilities, golf courses, and businesses. But again, we can't ignore the facts, particularly regarding the healthcare facts, and the gating criteria that came out of the Trump administration, as well as the criteria from the governor's office. I can support a motion in that vein, but not with a specific date attached to it. I think that that would not be responsible.
If I could just add in there, these are dates for us to be ready. And I would like, I'm sorry, I, I've missed out on item two of the start now developing criteria for the reopening of gyms, restaurants, salons, and large warehouse stores. And, you know, I, I, we, we seem to go here sometimes, and to say that this is all about politics and emotion is disingenuous. We have facts. We have a declining trend. We have an opportunity to be ready for businesses and we, and, and to give them some hope. These are facts. I mean, since day one, whether we've tested 100 people or we've tested 34,000 people, the number has remained at 7% of those we test are test positive with the coronavirus. Over half of the people that have tested, over 2,300 that have tested positive, over half of those have gone through the 14-day isolation period. I want us to be ready on May 1st to be, to open. We, I know we can't decide that we are going, I want to be ready. I want to be ready in these business sectors, and I want to be lobbying the governor to open sooner, rather than later. To me, saying we're going to wait for the government to do this, we're going to wait for the government to set that criteria, this criteria, to me is big government hitting in the way. These businesses are our economy. These small businesses employ hundreds of thousands of people in San Diego County. In order to provide the resources that the disenfranchised and the underserved need, we need to get this economy going sooner rather than later. So these deadlines I'm putting in place are deadlines to be ready, and deadlines to lobby for. That's, that's all, and I'm keeping my motion as it is. And thanks, thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, let me ask the clerk to go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Cox?
No.
Supervisor Jacob?
No.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
No.
And Vice Chairman Desmond?
Yes.
Chairman Cox, that motion fails with Supervisors Gaspar and Vice Chairman Desmond voting aye, all other supervisors being present and voting no.
I would offer a motion to approve items two and 19 per the staff recommendations.
Second.
And I would just add a couple of comments. I, I, and said, I'm very sympathetic to the issues that have been brought up by, by Supervisor Desmond. I actually think we will have some criteria out probably by the end of the week in regards to opening up some of the recreational elements in, in the San Diego region, at least in the unincorporated area. Again, the parks are pretty much controlled by each of the jurisdictions as far as what they're going to do. And I know Mayor Faulkner has indicated that they're going to be making some modifications to park usage in the city of San Diego. We anticipate we're going to be seeing some concurrence on the part of the 10 coastal cities and the state parks in regards to some criteria that will allow those parks and beaches to be opened in the very near future. And while it's nice to put an arbitrary deadline, I think, you know, we need to have the flexibility to look at the, the information that's coming out. Again, it's a good trend line that we're on now. We just need a few more days, I think, to, to be in a position to make some, some educated and decisions, which we're all waiting for. Any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, at the same time, I would hope that the subcommittee, and by the way, I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman, and Supervisor Fletcher, and all the work you're doing as the sub, subcommittee, but also continue to work on criteria to open up certain businesses. I certainly support that, as I indicated earlier, but I don't think we can put an arbitrary timeline on it.
Well, some of those criterias are being worked on right now. And so, yeah, that, that will certainly continue, and I think we'll have something to share later this week.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, it's the clerk. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar? Supervisor Gaspar? Supervisor Gaspar, you have a vote, please. Looks, appears as if you're on mute right now.
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Okay, we're going to go back and pick up item one very quickly. I think we had indicated that there was, because it wanted to speak on item number one, but I think they really were intending to speak on item number two. So if, if we can, Mr. Clerk, can you go ahead and read the, the heading on, on item number one? And let us know if there's any people that wish to speak on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item has been titled, "Authorization to Accept California Department of Public Health Funding for County-Wide Childhood-Led Poisoning Prevention Services. Authorization to Pursue Future Funding Opportunities for Childhood-Led Poisoning Prevention Services." We do not have any requests to speak on this item.
Okay, I would move for approval of item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion by the chair and seconded by Supervisor Jacob. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Okay, we're going to go to item number five now, which was brought forward by Supervisor Desmond and myself. This is streamlining renewable energy projects in San Diego County. I'd like to take an opportunity, and then I'll give an opportunity to Supervisor Desmond to make some introductory comments. And I think we do have a few speakers on, on these items. I'm very happy to bring this item before us today, along with Vice Chairman Desmond, to streamline the renewable energy process, which was one of the goals that I listed in my seat of the county address back in February. And I believe that we still have the ability to lay the groundwork to accomplish this goal. As you all know, late, late last year, this board took the next step on what was a challenging decision, for at least me, to create the, a community choice energy or CCE program. The program has the potential to bring cost savings to county residents and use more green energy to power our homes and businesses. Accomplishing these two goals will be great news for our residents and for our region. In addition, a number, as a member of this board knows, of all the members of this board know, one of the county's greenhouse gas mitigation strategy in its climate action plan dictates that the county reach 90% renewable energy used county-wide by 2030. A CCE program could help us achieve that goal. But there is more to this conversation surrounding green energy. A CCE, CCE energy program in and of itself does not create any new renewable energy. And this board should not be content with simply trading existing contracts with the existing utility provider and declare our job done. Because while it might feel good for this board to say we are providing renewable energy for our residents, we will not have really changed anything except for who pays the renewable energy developers for the energy that they provide. That's why I partner with Vice Chair Jim Desmond to bring forward today's board letter for our board's consideration. Today's action will direct staff to look at the ways that we can help get renewable energy projects off the ground right here in our own backyard and come back to the board with options. My hope is that by 2030, all homes and businesses in the unincorporated area will be powered by renewable energy. As such, I strongly urge your support. And I'll ask Supervisor Desmond if he would like to make some additional comments.
Mr. Chairman, this is clerk of the board before Mr. Desmond begins his comments. I would like to remind any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. There were two requests to speak on this item, and we're just waiting for them to call in if they still choose.
Can I talk, Andrew? All right. See, I want to thank Chairman Cox, you know, for co-docketing or asking me to co-docket this item with him. In October last year, the board took an action to implement the Community Choice Aggregation Program, CCAs, which is going to completely change how we purchase and procure power within the county. I actually voted against that option. However, if, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right. And we need to provide our own and be our own energy resource as much as possible here in San Diego County. I don't want the county just to be, or be a power procurer, but rather be a power producer as well. Because of the climate change, the region, we have to start creating more green energy, more than ever. Many jurisdictions are also going down the same route throughout the county. If we're to implement the CCA, then we should also be creating our own renewable energy here in San Diego County. We don't want to be reliable on everybody else out there. We want to be self-reliant as much as possible. So my, so today's action will direct staff to identify options and return with the following: potential sites for renewable energy throughout the region; to develop a programmatic EIR to streamline review of renewable projects; and to develop a design exemption checklist. And so just look for opportunities for renewable projects in surrounding jurisdictions as well, not just San Diego County, maybe Imperial County, Mexico, Riverside County, any place we can partner up with. So I think we're, what we're really asking for today is go out, take a look, see what, see what are some promising sites, or potential sites, bring it back, and then we'll take a look at them and, and vote on them later. So thank you very much, Chairman Cox, for bringing this forward.
Let me ask if, Andrew, if we have any call-ins at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have public speakers on this item that are ready.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and hear them, and then we'll get into discussions?
Thank you, Chairman Cox. Our first caller is Joe Gabalden, 0771.
Great. Good afternoon, Chairman Cox, members of the Board of Supervisors. On behalf of my 4,000 colleagues at San Diego Gas Electric Company, I'm urging your support of this item. SDGNE respects our customers' right to choose their energy provider and supports the movement to more renewable energy. Regardless of the energy provider, SDGNE will continue to provide award-winning reliability and operate a safe and reliable grid to deliver energy, the energy mix you choose. The entrance of new suppliers into the region's energy system will require people, people power and the robust transportation, transmission, and distribution system. Our team of highly-trained employees is available to assist your staff as they assess strategic, strategies and initiatives to increase opportunities for local energy production. assess strategies and initiatives to increase opportunities for local energy production. If new assets are to be efficiently integrated, it will require collaboration between the county, prospective renewable energy producers, and SDGNE. We appreciate the longstanding collaboration we have with the county. We look forward to continuing this partnership into the future. One last thing, I'd also like to agree with Dr. Nick and Mayor, our San Marcos Mayor, Rebecca Jones' comments. Like to thank the Board of Supervisors and county employees who are fighting so hard during this crisis and offer our support wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyler Martin, 1437, if you can confirm your name for the record.
Yes, this is Tyler Martin from J. Whalen Associates, usually at 1660 Hotel Circle North. Today, I'm representing the East County Renewable Coalition, which is a loose organization of competitors who are working together to advance renewable energy in San Diego County. You should have received some letters of support in your packages prior to the hearing. Speaking today in support of Chairperson Cox and Supervisor Desmond's recommendation, the county is doing community choice energy, and thus, there's a need to create our own sources of energy right here locally. Streamlining the permitting of what we like to call infill solar helps the county attain its goals of self-sufficiency in energy. But it also helps spread the impact over more geographic areas, rather than just concentrating the impact to one or two areas like Boulevard or Borrego Springs. And finally, we pledge our support for technical and other collaborations. I urge you to vote in favor by the board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have one remaining caller on the line with last four digits, 0061. If you'd like to address the board on item five, please state your first and last name for the record.
Yes, hi. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Julie Meyer-Wright. I live in San Diego. The county has set ambitious renewable energy targets. You'll recall that Jim Waring testified last fall that energy produced drop-offs with distance. And he and I also noted the length of time it takes to go from a proposed project to full production, often a decade, and of course, the risk to San Diego of increased competition for limited supplies, which would drive up costs. It makes sense for us to focus on renewable energy production, as I urged in September and October. I strongly recommend the county authorize funding for a study of the binational mega-region to include San Diego and Imperial Counties, Northern Baja California, Riverside County, and perhaps Western Arizona. The study team would include relevant experts in energy production, land use, community development, workforce, and other areas. The study goal would be to determine candidate opportunities for renewable energy production in the mega-region as well as potential incentives and regulatory streamlining to make energy production investment attractive. I chaired the California Economic Strategy Panel for many years. It studied regions to understand their economic base and their assets and liabilities for targeted industries, in this case, renewable energy production. This process engages stakeholders, and it works very well. The resulting report could be a roadmap for job-creating economic development efforts and for red teams to make specific projects throughout the mega-region a reality. So I strongly recommend that the county authorize funding for a mega-region study of renewable energy opportunities for San Diego with the goal of making our corner of the United States a renewable energy capital. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And that concludes public testimony on this item.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommendations as presented. Is there a second? Okay, Supervisor Desmond, you probably need to verbally say that.
Yes, I'll second the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there are different ways to provide renewable energy for the region, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. But I do believe that community choice energy is the future, and the path in which we get there, though, is open for debate. Today's action and the motion on the floor, unless you're acceptable to my proposed amendment, I'm unable to support. I remain steadfast against any action that allows more easily the proliferation of large-scale energy projects in District 2. We have currently 50,000 acres that are either being used by large renewable energy projects or proposed in our East County backcountry area. 50,000 acres, enough is enough. I would suggest that the region and other areas that were mentioned share in these large facilities. East County already has major wind farms that sit on tens of thousands of acres of pristine land, as I mentioned, 50,000 to be more exact or more, and more turbines currently in process. Some propose to be as tall as 600 feet across ridge lines. This industrialization of our backcountry was something that was never intended and never dealt with in our general plan. Add in the other major solar projects and all the infrastructure needed associated to connect them to the grid. My communities in East County have seen enough and the impacts they caused to life and property. In addition, these projects wreak havoc to our overall environment, especially when it comes to fire safety. All these projects are in high-fire-risk areas. These large-scale, industrial-sized energy projects are honestly another bad approach that attempts to generate massive amounts of energy and transport it to other users far, far away. It's not for use in the unincorporated area in San Diego County. They generate massive amounts of energy, but to do this, they must rely on miles and miles of vulnerable lines strung through fire-prone areas where major wildfires are just a matter of time. If we're truly talking about the environment, sustainability, and reliability, there are better options out there. If we're truly going to do this, we would expand our efforts and do more with rooftop solar, distributed energy. I believe that's the future for our community choice energy program, where the local systems and even microgrids, such as the microgrids, can create their own energy. They have the capacity to store it and avoid any future disruption in power, and the power is used right here in our region. And all that lies the real value to our environment, going green and self-sustainability. I would like to recommend, and recommendation number two, on the last line where it says, basically identifying ideal locations for renewable energy projects, I would like to suggest in communities where there has not already been a high concentration of projects or proposed projects. That would be my suggestion. Otherwise, I would ask for that to be included, and I would support the action. Otherwise, I can't.
Okay, let me ask you if you want to make that as a motion to amend. I don't prefer to include that in the direction, so I would ask if you'd like to make that as a motion, and then we could consider that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can count. So if you're not willing to put that as an amendment, and Supervisor Desmond's not worth putting it in an amendment, I don't think it's going to happen, so.
Well, there are five supervisors.
Well, that's true. Okay, if you're suggesting that, I would put a motion to offer that as an amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It is a second by Supervisor Fletcher. Any further discussion? Yes, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. And I don't, the intent of this board letter was never to highly concentrate these projects anywhere. But to not have them in the unincorporated area is very limiting. And quite frankly, high concentration, I don't know what that is. Is that 20, you know, projects within 50 square miles? I have no idea what, how that's defined. So, and it's not, I don't think, I think it's too ambiguous to say what that is, because I don't know if that rules out Borrego or rules out other areas or not. So to me, I can't support the, I guess, the substitute motion for just lack of definition or lack of facts on this item.
I could define it, Boulevard. I was trying to be general. I mean, the Boulevard area, you're looking at that area with 50,000 acres impacted by these high, the very large wind projects primarily.
How big is Boulevard?
Well, we've got 50,000 acres. I don't know of any other community. I'm not talking about the whole unincorporated area. You know, whatever you want to do is fine. I'm just making my point. Enough's enough for the Boulevard East County backcountry area. You want to do it, Jim, in your district, or Greg, or Kristen, have at it. I think we should share the wealth.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Can we restate?
I'm sorry, go ahead Supervisor Fletcher.
Can we just restate the amended motion we're voting on?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. Item number two, I would add, identifying ideal locations for renewable energy projects in communities where there hasn't, has not, where there hasn't already been a high concentration of projects or proposed projects. So, and I'm suggesting the high concentration areas, the 50,000 acres, and basically the Boulevard area in the backcountry of East County, the Boulevard area specifically.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that's a reasonable accommodation. This is direction to staff to have them study and come back. And it's just some parameters around something that they should keep in mind when they do. And I think telling them to keep in mind as they bring us something back to take into account these high concentration areas is a modest and reasonable change that I'm happy to support.
Okay, any further discussion? I would just, I think if we're going to do a study on potential sites, I think we need to look at the entire county. I'm very sympathetic to the concerns of Supervisor Jacob. Boulevard has certainly done a lot, but I think we ought to evaluate the county in its entirety and not arbitrarily identify, you know, certain areas that aren't going to be considered. So I would ask for a no vote on the amendment, and then obviously, we'll go to the main question. Any further discussion? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll on the amendment? This is an amendment by Supervisor Jacob, seconded by Supervisor Fletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Cox?
No.
Supervisor Jacob?
Yes.
Supervisor Gaspar?
No.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond?
No.
Mr. Chairman, that motion fails with Supervisor Jacob and Supervisor Fletcher voting aye, all other supervisors being present and voting no.
Okay, we have the main motion in front of us now. A motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Desmond. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Just a quick, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. We're not trying to dump on Boulevard. I mean, absolutely not. We're just asking for the list of what is potential out there. And quite frankly, if District 5, you know, has good potential sites, we should take a look at them. And so I'm just asking that we don't go parochial now. Let's wait and see the sites and then, you know, start protecting or carving out. I just, I think it's too early for this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
No.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
No.
Supervisor Desmond?
Yes.
Chairman Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the fourth recommendation in that item requires four votes. Therefore, with this action, recommendations one through three are adopted with County Council, which I'm in here.
The problem is, is that they would not have any funding to take the actions on run to three if we don't get the appropriations. So that, while you could direct them to do that, if you don't give the appropriations with, which requires four votes, then there won't be the funds available to take the actions that are necessary in items one through three.
Might I suggest, and I don't know, obviously, this is not a part of the agenda today, but I know Supervisor Desmond and I both have neighborhood reinvestment funds that we could consider. The funding side of this, and if we don't come up with the funding side of it, well, then, you know, I guess the recommendations would not move forward. But I would suggest we let the motion carry on those three items that only require three out of five votes, and we'll try to address the fourth recommendation in regards to funding at a subsequent board meeting. Is there any legal problem with that, Mr. County Council?
You will have given a direction to the CIO to take actions and to staff to take actions that they're not able to take. If you wanted to recast the motion as a motion to adopt run to three contingent upon you being able to find some kind of a funding source, then that would be what you would have to do.
Okay, I would so move.
Okay, I'll second it, but the NRP dollars, I'd rather not go right there, Mr. Chairman. You know, we did a similar vote where we found money for the voting centers. We brought it back and were able to find money within the agencies to make, to find those dollars and make that happen. So that might be a potential avenue as well. But I'd like to move forward with this, and we'll find the money later. Or we'll get, we'll get the money at a later date or later meeting.
Okay, so are you seconding that motion then, without identifying a funding source? So it would be to accept the recommendations one, two, and three, subject to identifying appropriate funding?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
No.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Oh.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Yes.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes with Supervisor Jacob and Supervisor Fletcher voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, we'll move on now to item 10, which was, I think, pulled by Supervisor Desmond. This is the adoption of a resolution approving a list of projects proposed to be funded by Senate No. 1. Supervisor Desmond, did you have some questions?
Yes, actually, if it would be okay, there's an item or a road section that is very important to District 5. We had asked that it be in the, in this list. It was not put in the list. It's a portion of road, a Valley Center road, a segment from Lake Woolford to Coalgrade Road. This is one of the most used roads into and out of Valley Center. It's, as far as the PCI value, is still within the range, I guess, not to be on this list, but it is used, it's an arterial that is used quite often. We get most complaints on. I did my revitalization meetings that I learned how to do from Supervisor Jacob, thank you. And for an hour, all Valley Center talked about was roads, 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 and roads. So this is a very important section of road that I'd just like to have added onto the list, and that would be Valley Center Road from Lake Woolford Road to Coalgrade Road. And I understand there may or may not be enough funding from SB 1. I just want to get it on the list. So that would be my motion to approve item 10, adding in District 5 that section of Valley Center Road, Lake Woolford Road to Coalgrade Road. Now, make that of the.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, and with the understanding that this will be coming back for an update around May 14th, when we find out the final numbers in terms of how much road money we're going to have. Is that correct?
That's correct, Supervisor Jacob. We will be getting the actual numbers from the state on May 14th, and we'll be reporting back to your board on what the dollar figures look like and what adjustments may need to be made for purposes of the list of projects that would be able to be funded.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion by Vice Chair Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Jacob, to approve item 10 with the additional direction by Supervisor Jacob. Jacob to approve item 10 with the additional direction by Supervisor Desmond. Any further discussion? All right, would the court please call a roll?
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
We'll move on to item 21, which is a pathway to recovery business loan program for the unincorporated area. This is brought forward by Vice Chairman Jim Desmond and Supervisor Jacob. Which one of you would like to speak first?
And Mr. Chairman, before the board begins commenting on this item, I would like to ask the public, for any members that wish to speak on this item, please dial into the conference line now.
Okay, Vice Chair Desmond, you wanted to make some introductory comments?
Unless, Supervisor Jacob, do you want to start?
Up to you, I'm happy to.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Ladies first.
Well, first of all, I, I appreciate the Vice Chairman Desmond in partnering up on this item with an effort to establish a loan program for businesses in the unincorporated area. And we know by previous input how important this is and comments that were made. We also know that small businesses are the backbone of our communities, backbone of our economy, and they're in a world of hurt right now. And in talking with the East County Economic Development Council, we learned that the overwhelming majority of businesses in the East County area have less than 50 employees, and most of these have less than 20 employees. These are companies that often have to bust their tail to get, keep going during normal conditions, so the current health crisis has really decimated most of them. These are businesses with limited resources and access to funds to stay afloat right now, especially with the federal loan dollars having run out. Hopefully today, we'll have some good news on that federal loan program and more money into that. While cities and other levels of government are also taking action, the county, I believe, needs to do all it can to ease the losses in our unincorporated areas as well, and to help set employers on a path to recovery. The San Diego Foundation has stepped up to provide a mechanism that will not only get these funds out as quick as possible, hopefully accepting applications next month, that's May, with loans being dispersed in June. In addition, we'll also be safeguarding taxpayer dollars so the funds eventually come back to the county. Mark Stewart and James Howe from the San Diego Foundation, and David Lynn from Mission Driven Finance, I understand, are standing by in case there are some questions and would be willing and able to provide additional detail on that. But businesses will not be charged more than 2% interest and have an extended period of time to pay it back. If you look at C in the recommendation, one indicates that the loan repayment cannot exceed 30 months. But in order to tap into state funding that would guarantee a return of 95% of our investment, the time period needs to be changed to 60 months. So, and I appreciate Supervisor Fletcher's efforts in working on the state program, which this would tie into very nicely. So I think this may give employers of the small businesses in the unincorporated area some time to get on their feet, keep employees on the job. However, it's just one piece of helping our region's economy recover, but I think it's going to be a significant boost for some of our businesses that could easily be left behind. And with that, if you'd like, I'll put a motion on the floor to approve the item as the Vice Chair and I have recommended with the amendment, instead of the 30 months, 60 months.
Second, a motion by Supervisor Jacob, seconded by Vice Chair Desmond. Supervisor Desmond, did you wish some initial comments?
Well, you put it very well Supervisor Jacob. Thank you very much. You know, a lot of detail in there, and you're right, these businesses, you know, they may not be opening soon, we don't know. But, and they need the dollars, and they need the opportunity for those dollars as quickly as possible. And I thank the San Diego Foundation for helping out in that effort, also for Supervisor Fletcher for helping out in that effort, and make, and getting these dollars available as quickly as, as we can to, to those who need them. Keep those businesses that are on the fringe or on the fence, hopefully we can keep them open and get their, get their employees back to work. So, thank you very much.
All right, I understand we may have a couple of callers on this. Can I ask the court if there's any callers waiting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have members of the public that wish to address the board on this item.
Thank you. We have two speakers on this item, David Lynn and Mark Stewart from the San Diego Foundation. If you'd like to make any comments on this item. David Lynn, you can proceed.
David is here, but I'm here to support Mark Stewart, who I hope is on with the San Diego Foundation.
Great, he is here. Mark Stewart, would you like to proceed?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon Supervisors. I'm very grateful for Supervisors Jacob and Desmond for bringing this item to your agenda, and for Supervisor Fletcher for helping to create the San Diego COVID-19 Community Response Fund. As we respond to this emergency, we know we have to be mindful of our county's ability to rebuild and recover. Creating a no and low interest loan program for small businesses and nonprofits throughout our county is key to a brighter future. A coalition of leaders have created the San Diego County COVID-19 Small Business and Nonprofit Loan Program. These partners, including Mission Driven Finance, Lisk San Diego, California Southern, and ASEON, have deep experience with loan programs like the one under consideration today. Having the Supervisors focus $5 million for the unincorporated areas of San Diego County will ensure that loan funds reach parts of our region where funding may not be readily accessible. Our loan program coalition will work aggressively to bring more capital to the program, to help businesses and nonprofits in every corner of the county. Should the Supervisors approve this $5 million loan commitment, we can begin immediately to negotiate program details with the Chief Administrator's Office, finalize the MOU with our partners, develop a full online application process, advertise the opportunity, et cetera. This will take weeks and not days. However, we have already created an online initial interest form for small businesses and nonprofits so that we can build a lead list and stay in contact with those who are interested. By doing so, we can be ready to reach out to those businesses and nonprofits as soon as we are ready to accept applications. Again, we're very grateful for your consideration of this $5 million request.
And that concludes public testimony on this item. Chairman Cox?
Okay, appreciate the public comments, and I just want to commend Vice Chair Desmond and Supervisor Jacob for bringing this item forward. I think, obviously, there's a lot of businesses in the unincorporated area that are struggling right now, and I think this is going to be some, potentially some relief for them. Even though it is a loan, it's at a pretty modest interest rate, and hopefully it'll, it'll tide people over until we can get, you know, business back to a more, a normal pattern. Any further comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can, I want to commend the two Supervisors for bringing this forward, and I want to thank in particular Mark Stewart at the foundation. We stood up our Community Resource Fund early, and I'm, I'm very pleased that we've raised over $10 million in private sector funds and philanthropy into that to provide help and assistance to individuals. But we know the need of small businesses is great, and about a, three or four weeks ago, when we reached out to Mark and said, there's some state guaranteed funds, there's some subordinate funds, there's some folks who have expertise in, in lending and, and assessing requests and monitoring and tracking. It's been a difficult process pulling all of that together in one fund. But to have an entity that has expertise in doing this, and to have the ability to potentially guarantee at least 95% of, of the county's investment is, is not only right for the county general fund, but it'll also put us in a better position to be more effective for the businesses that will benefit from this. And so we expect San Diego County will be the first contributing to this fund in terms of jurisdictions that want to help their, their residents and small businesses, but we don't expect it will be the last. And so really grateful to see a step forward at the county to, to make the first investment into this. And again, just a special thank you to Mark and everyone at the foundation. Every time we call with something that's complicated and difficult and hard, and it's going to take a while to pull together, they move rapidly and get it done, and the San Diego region is grateful for them.
Very good. Any additional comments? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Jacob, seconded by Vice Chair Desmond to approve the recommendations on item number 21. If there's no further discussion with the court, please call the roll.
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob? Supervisor Jacob, microphone might be muted.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Okay, our last item on the agenda for today is item number four. This is a notice public hearing applicant request to rescind the Newland Sierra General Plan Amendment, specific plan, zone reclassification, tentative map, and resource protection ordinance amendment located in the North County Metropolitan Subregional Plan Area and the Bonsole Community Plan Area. Is there any additional comments from staff?
No, no additional comments. Chairman Cox, we do have a brief presentation if you would like that, but this is really the rescission based on the vote of the public that we are moving forward for your consideration at this time.
I'm not sure that we need a presentation, but let me ask my colleagues if there's a request or desire on their part to have the presentation. I don't see anybody jumping up and down saying yes. So why don't we go right to the, to the callers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to Assistant Clerk of the Board, Aaron Demers, to call, identify the callers.
Yes, our first caller is, last four digits, 5458. If you could please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Chris Garrett, and I'm commenting on item number four.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Cox and Supervisors. I've submitted a letter and an e-comment to the Clerk of the Board, so I won't repeat my comments. I represent a number of clients who have been concerned about the Newland project and the Newland site since the application for the project was first submitted in January of 2015. My clients don't really understand what the current agenda item, number four, means. It seems to involve the rescission of previously adopted resolutions and ordinances, but there are no resolutions and ordinances included in this board agenda item. We've asked for more information, but have been told to simply read the board agenda. Normally, when a city or county adopts or rescinds an ordinance or resolution, they use a new ordinance or resolution to do so. It is also not clear whether the board actions today involve all the prior actions taken, such as rescinding Resolution 18143, the tentative map adopted for the project, or rescinding the board's action item nine regarding the design and construction of Deer Springs Road, listed in your clerk's September 26, 2018 Statement of Proceedings, which was also adopted at the same time. So we hope you take action now or at some point to provide more information to the community about what the county is doing with respect to this project and the pending application. We think the staff, the board, and county council should be more than just a conduit for a developer or applicant request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we also have Mark Dillon on the line for item four. Mark, did you have any additional comments?
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Mark Dillon, speaking on behalf of Newland Sierra, Chairman Cox, board members. Your agenda item is clear. It does include the rescission of the tentative map resolution. It's, it's listed in the agenda item four. So that's the answer to the first question raised by Mr. Garrett. Second question is, I don't understand nor do I agree with conduit questions. Nobody's a conduit here. We've submitted a written letter requesting withdrawal of all of the project approvals and DIR approvals, and your agenda item is clear on that point. If, if the county staff wants to go ahead and further memorialize that with a rescinding resolution or resolutions, that's certainly fine. And I'll, I'll hold off on any more commentary at this point. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Chairman Cox, that concludes public testimony on this item.
Let me ask if County Council has on any, any comments on the questions raised by, by Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've been in contact with Bill Witt, the attorney that was working with this, and he said that he is comfortable with our process. That is the process we've used in the past for these types of actions and rescissions, so we recommend you move forward.
Okay, is there a motion to exempt the staff recommendations?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Desmond. I'll second the, the motion. Any further discussion? All right, would the court please call the roll?
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Very good. Well, that completes all of the items on today's agenda. There is a need to go into closed session, which we will do immediately at the conclusion of this meeting. If there's any reportable items out of closed session, that'll be done by the county council immediately after the closed session. Our next regular meeting with the board of supervisors will be on May 5th at 9:00 a.m. If there's no further items that come before this board, we will stand adjourned until May 5th.